Good afternoon and welcome to the afternoon session of the July 24th Board of Supervisors Meeting. Before I call Madam Clerk, I would like to recognize the two elected officials in the meeting this afternoon. The Honorable Jennifer Hughes, Commissioner of Revenue, raise your hand if you would. Thank you. Thanks for standing. And the Honorable Dot Heffron, Chair of the Chesterfield County School Board, here as well, along with Mr. Murray, who's interim superintendent. Thank you all for being here today. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. A board member may vote to approve all sets of minutes as a block, even if the board member did not attend certain meetings. We need a motion to approve the minutes for the joint annual meeting of the CVTA, Plan RBA Commission, and RRTPO Policy Board on June 13th, the NACO Annual Conference and Exposition, July 11th through 16th, and the Board of Supervisors meeting on June 26th. So moved.
May I have a motion? It's been moved, Dan.
Certainly.
Properly second any additional discussion or updates. Here it none. All those in favor, sign a "aye."
Aye.
As have it unanimously approved. Thank you.
Item two, request to postpone agenda items and additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation. Staff has no requests. Item three, Everyday Excellence, Dr. Casey.
Thank you. Members of the Board and the public that is here and the public that is watching, for those that don't know, we start every meeting of Chesterfield County's Board of Supervisors with Everyday Excellence, and it really just picks the frontline people that have done something above and beyond the call of duty, many times not even, you know, no media releases, no other recognitions, but them themselves on their own, many times, just doing something for the people of Chesterfield County. And so today is no exception. So if Mr. Luther could come to the front of the room and bring up our friends that are sitting behind me, who I just told, is this is in reference to the Daniel Park project, the Diamonds, and anyone who's, anyone knows that this was an amazing scoped project, and a project that would not have got accomplished on time, within budgets, and actually lower than other costs because of the resources that were deployed behind me. And those resources, I will tell you, I've gotten so many compliments. People want to know, what was the secret to the, to the project being so successful? What contractor did you use to do something so fast, so nice? And I actually said, a lot of that contractor is right here before you today, and you can't have them. They're here, they're on the next project. In fact, you know, they probably, we probably had to drag a few of them in here because they love what they do so much out in the field. So, Mr. Luther, take it from here, please.
Thank you very much, Dr. Casey. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I won't belabor what Dr. Casey said as an introduction. I'm gonna turn this over to our Assistant Director of Parks, and more importantly, our Chief of Parks, Park Manager, over this, this new operational group, Vince Henderson. Vince, I just asked him, it seemed like you've been here forever, but Stan hired him away from a neighbor across the river that we won't mention, and he's been here just under a year, and this crew and everything they've done is a real testament to a change in philosophy of us being out in the parks, doing the work when the parks are at their peak in terms of uses. So, I'm gonna let Vince recognize these gentlemen here, but again, I want to thank you as well for everything you do to make this department look good, for the residents and visitors alike. So, thank you all.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Vince Henderson, Chief of Parks. I would just like to say a couple things. Five of these guys haven't even been here, probably eight months, and they, they have just, I mean, this whole group has just been unbelievable to work with, and they're just part of our, our staff. It's not everybody, so there are others, but in, in, in not any particular order, but I would like to recognize Doug White and Jeff Rogers as my two managers, and I've got Josh Campbell, Hunter Gardner, Ryland Doughty, and Trevor Tipton, Danny Harrell, Joseph Cuffey, and Alex Hearn. And we're very happy to be here today and appreciate all the support we've been getting.
Well, we want to thank you for, first of all, being here, and thank you for the excellence you personify and the difference you make, certainly, and we appreciate that very much. Supervisors, any comments you'd like to make at this point? Supervisors.
I think it's amazing what you guys do, and the fact that you're out in this heat that we had is just amazing, and I hope you're soaking up some of the air conditioning right now because I know you had to go back out, but thank you so much. I've been out to the park. We were there for the ribbon cutting, it was awesome, and we were just at the parks again for another tournament this weekend on, was that Friday? Yeah, yeah. So, you guys are doing a great job, and please keep up the great work. Thanks.
Thank you, supervisors. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just, again, thank you very much. All of the parks in Matoka look fantastic. You all keep doing a great job to keep it up, and I hear it from the citizens, so keep up the great work. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We appreciate so very much, as you know, our citizens appreciate it, and those who come from outside the county also appreciate your parks and the work you do to make them pristine. So, thank you, and we appreciate your being here again today. Thanks, and have a great evening.
A, intern recognition, Dr. Casey.
Yes, I want to just, first and foremost, thank you for recognizing that Parks and Rec Crew. But again, a lot of the talent sometimes starts with those that are in school, that want to see if local government may be a career for them, if that's the passion, and we do our best to try and work with the community to illustrate. We basically almost have every job description someone may pursue with a passion, and to the degree we can align them up in an internship today, and maybe a job tomorrow, but if not here, that they have some skills in resume building and ideas of what they may want to do to help the community around them. And ideally, we have the community for them to live here. So with that said, is it Ms. Selby that, yeah, Mary Martin-Selby, our HR Director, will introduce the internship program, a little overview, but, and then I think we have a speaker that is going to represent our class this year. Ms. Selby.
Welcome. It's good to see you all.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Casey. As you know, Chesterfield County has hosted internship programs since the early 1980s. It's the county's way of helping to grow that next generation of public servants. Many of our former interns have returned to the county in full-time positions, so supporting students through the internship process is just part of our DNA. It's what we do. On May 28th, we continue the tradition, and we brought on another class of interns, actually our largest class to date, and some of the interns are here today, not all of them, to observe just a portion of the Board of Supervisors meeting. Also, it's important to note that even though we highlight the summer internship program, we have interns that are here in the county all year long. As a matter of fact, right now, there are an additional seven interns working in various county departments, and they range from high school students to graduate-level students. So we wanted to make sure we made note of that. At this time, however, I'd like to ask the interns that are here from the summer internship program to stand and to introduce themselves very briefly, so you know who we have with us, and we're gonna start first, if you all could stand with Keon.
And share their institution if they would like.
Yes.
Please.
Hi, everyone. Hope everyone's Monday is going well. My name is Keon Parastaron. I'm a rising senior now at the College of William &amp; Mary, and I have had the privilege of interning at the Chesterfield Juvenile Detention Home.
Thank you, Keon. My name is Amari Walker. I am a rising senior as well, but at the University of Richmond, and I have had the pleasure of interning at the Mental Health Support Services within the Assertive Community Treatment Team, or ACT Team.
My name is James Bell. I'm a rising fifth-year student at Shepherd University up in West Virginia, Chesterfield County native though, so glad to be here helping the community, and I work with sports, visitation, entertainment, so, yeah. We did a lot with the Parks and Rec building Daniel Park and everything, so it's been a great experience to see.
Hi, I'm Stacy Snyder, and I'm in my last semester at Old Dominion University, getting my master's in Library and Information Science, and I'm interning with the Meadowdale Library this, this summer. It's been wonderful.
Hello, my name is Alex Scott. I am a rising junior from the University of Richmond as well, and I am interning with the procurement department.
Hi, I'm Emily Waters, and I'm a rising junior at Virginia Tech, and I'm with Communications and Media this summer.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jenny Yang, and I'm currently a rising junior at Vanderbilt University, interning for the Accounting Department.
Hello, my name's Rachel Spencer. I'm a rising third-year at the University of Virginia, and I'm interning with the Learning and Performance Center.
Hi, my name is Kendall Curry. I'm also a rising third-year at the University of Virginia, and I had a chance to intern at the Mental Health Support Services.
Hello, my name is Maia Kivin. I am a rising junior at the College of William &amp; Mary, and I'm interning at the Registtor's Office.
Hi, I'm Ally Penzac. I'm a rising sophomore at Virginia Tech, and I'm interning in the Transportation Department.
Okay.
Is that everybody?
No, actually, sitting next to me.
Okay. Well, great, great, great.
Is your speaker.
Wonderful.
Henry Barnett. Henry is a rising senior at Virginia Commonwealth University. He's majoring in Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness and Monitoring in Spanish. He's currently interning with the Fire Department in the Emergency Management Services Division, and he would like to address the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the interns. And the rest of you, please, have a seat. Henry, take it away.
Good afternoon, everyone. Actually, my name is Henry Barnett. I am a VCU student studying Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. I'm actually a transplant to this area. I'm not from the Chesterfield at Richmond. I'm from a small little town on the East Coast called Matthews County, super tiny, if you've heard of it, you get a gold star. I work in the Emergency Management Department under my wonderful boss, Jess Robinson, and while this is my first summer here, I've actually been a student volunteer with them for the past year and a half now, and they've been absolutely wonderful to me. A lot of my work consists of public outreach. I work really closely with places like the Lifelong Learning Institute, as well as working with our CERT team members to teach public education classes we offer for free. I also recently got my CERT membership certification, so I'm officially part of the team as well, volunteering here around Chesterfield. But specifically this summer, I've been working on training and emerg, creating a training for emergency preparedness for all Chesterfield employees, whether that's telework or in-office, highlighting all the importance of always being prepared and just making sure you're doing what you're supposed to do. But I've also been continuing my public outreach work. Our Emergency Management Department offers five main classes for free to the public, such as Emergency Preparedness, You Are the Help Until Help Arises, which is a female-regulated course, Emergency Financial First Aid Kit, which helps provide guidance on any type of financial preparedness that you might need, Hands-Only CPR, which we actually just taught a class today at Huguenot Baptist Church, as well as Stop the Bleed, which I'm certified to teach, very proud of that. But I have been really impressed by all the other interns that have been doing so many wonderful things. We actually have 23 interns across 15 different departments, which is so incredibly awesome. A lot of us are doing basic intern things that you would imagine, such as attending meetings, working with fellow staff members on projects, stuff like that, but also some really cool things that I've been learning and have been awesome and to hear about, such as in Parks Recreation, some of the interns are inclusion coaches at various outdoor camps. Transportation Department, people have been inspecting transportation projects, doing traffic impact analyses. At the Registtor's Office, one of our interns has been working with the communication team to create videos and other outreach materials. Office of Constituent and Media Services, we have an intern who's a creative content writer on news releases, media advisories, and social media, and I actually saw on LinkedIn today, two of our interns are gonna be on the next episode of the Chesterfield Behind the Mic Podcast, so I'm definitely gonna be listening to that. Under Security Management, who I've been working to, with really closely, we've had two interns who are assisting in a lot of physical security assessments, and we actually just got to see a Black Hawk helicopter in action this morning, super fun. At the juvenile detention home, we have an intern who's been doing a lot of research programming, developing appropriate curriculum, and delivering educational programs to the youth. And as well as Mental Health Support Services, our interns have been assisting in planning, organizing, and facilitating groups and social activities with the customers that come in. My kind of highlights throughout the year and what I've taken away this summer was I've met an incredible group of not only interns, but professionals throughout Chesterfield who have really helped me grow as not only a young professional, but I can assume help our other interns grow as professionals. This has really helped me understand on a deeper level what it means to be in emergency management and kind of be in the adult working world. I just want to say thank you to all of you on the Board of Supervisors, as well as Dr. Casey for supporting us and providing this program, and I super encourage you all to keep it up because it's really helped me as well. I want to say a special thank you to Jess Robinson, Ken Smith, Chris Clark, and my fellow intern who couldn't be here today, Isabella Clark, for their constant encouragement of my own personal pursuit of growth in the professional realm. They have given me an incredible opportunity to jumpstart my career, and I'm just very appreciative of that, so thank you all.
Wonderful, wonderful. Supervisors, in the comments. Give them a hand. Give them a hand. Supervisors, yes.
I think that it's amazing that you're all willing to give up your full summer off of school to come and learn, and it just shows how responsible and eager you are to learn about what it's like to be in the actual workforce, and I think that's amazing, and maybe you should share it with some of your other classmates when you go back to school and just tell them about it, because it's, it's obviously a wonderful program, so thank you so much.
Other comments? Yes, Mr. Engel.
I just want to remind you that whether you're from Chesterfield, or whether you're just visiting for a little while, that Chesterfield does need people when you graduate to come back and fill roles permanently, so keep us in mind when your internship and your time in school is done.
Excellent. Thanks so very much. Well, thank you, Ms. Shelby, for your being here. I thank each of you interns, and I know as you mentioned, wonderful boss, we think she's wonderful too. Jess Robinson, I'm speaking of, in Emergency Management, so thank you all. We hope your experience has been an excellent one here in Chesterfield. The one word we use a lot, I hope you've heard this summer, is excellence in everything, and so we look forward to your comments, your suggestions about what we can do even better. We believe you can take it to another level, and you can help us do that. So thank you for your experience with us, and please share Chesterfield County wherever you go. Thank you for being here today. Let's give them another hand, please.
Item B, Parks and Recreation Update, Mr. Luther.
Mr. Luke, welcome back again. That's pretty, that's pretty impressive here. Okay, great, wonderful.
My name is Brenda White Vaughn. I'm the General Manager for the Chesterfield County Fair. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm so glad to be here, and thank you for having me here, as you do yearly, and yes, it is that time again, it's fair time, August 23rd, a month from yesterday, through the 31st. In 2024, the Chesterfield County Fair is going to celebrate its 113th birthday. I wasn't there for the first one, but sometimes I feel like I was. It's quite an accomplishment for something that started out in a field for farmers just to display, display their wares. We're also proud to celebrate on, on our opening day, August 23rd, the 275th birthday of Chesterfield County, as all of you have been invited to our special opening celebration that day, and I'm looking forward to seeing you there. With every year of the fair, we take pride in offering a fun, safe, and secure place for our visitors, thanks to you guys and ladies with the Board, and Parks and Rec. 2024 will be even more of those items for everyone. The perimeter of the fairgrounds has now been secured with new and more fencing, clear back to where the dog training is. Lighting has been improved, cameras are installed with security speakers, the replacement and improvement of Gate Two, which is our main gate. I thought it was beginning today, but perhaps with rain, it's been delayed a little bit. I'll have to check on that one. It'll be moved inward, so we'll have more standing room for our visitors, along with more room for metal detectors and bag checks. And new this year, the fair has also implemented a clear-bag policy. These are just a few of the much-needed things that we are so grateful. With that, along with the entire Board of Directors for the fair, say thank you. There's always new things at the fair, and this year is no exception. The foam zone will provide kids and adults, even those with a disability, to the ability to go through, just like you did as a kid, jumping through those mud puddles, except this is a foam material, non-toxic, of course. And then there's a kids' celebration, where people and families can participate in a fun-filled game as a group. Make sure that you visit the High Flying Pages, a circus trapeze that will boggle your mind when you see it. You'll be going, how are they doing that? They're crazy, but they love it, and they do it, and we enjoy it. You can be hypnotized nightly, all done in fun, and yes, this is an absolute must, 9:00 PM every night of the fair with Brad Matchett. If you have never seen it, you have to see it, because it is hilarious. Cowboy Circus, Danny Grant can teach your, teach your little ones to lasso, and just watch the smile on their faces when they're doing this thing and they lasso this cow he has, bull cow, whatever it is. The Mobile Dairy Classroom can show you how to milk a cow and teach you all things dairy at the same time. Come watch Devon Cole with his hot glass, he's a glass blower, making the most beautiful bowls, glasses, pumpkins, all sorts of things. It's truly amazing to watch this. And then there's animals, complete with camel rides. If you've never ridden a camel, I have, it's not real comfortable, but it's unique, and you can say you've done it, so I encourage you to do that, or your children as well. Also, check out our chainsaw artist. Even after all these years, it amazes me to see him take a chainsaw and create some work of art out of that, just from nothing. We have an indoor vendor marketplace, where we have 55 spaces where vendors come in and sell what they make or do, or it could be even Parks and Rec has a display there, all sorts of things. Make sure you visit that in the Exhibition Building. And what's a fair without fair food? Come out and try anything and everything fried, even if your heart doesn't desire it, Kevin. There are bands eight nights out of the nine, including a Beatles tribute band and a new Elvis impersonator doing a gospel show and a regular Elvis show. Monday night is the Chesterfield County Fair pageant. Come see who will represent us at the Virginia Association of Fairs Pageant in January in Williamsburg. And don't forget the Chesterfield Cheers Beer Garden, a great, great place to eat, have an adult beverage for those 21 and over, and you can watch the bands, all in one venue. Our newly renovated Arts and Crafts Building, you can come and see people show off their veggies, their canned goods, their quilts, and all sorts of things imaginable. Opening weekend, Friday and Saturday, we have a jousting company, complete with knights, horses, a princess, and more, so come see that. Thursday night is our Doggy Palooza contest, and we round out the end of the fair on August 30th through the 31st with our rodeo. So as you can see, as I always like to say, this isn't your grandma's fair anymore. 85 acres of so much to do that you'll probably need to come back several nights, and we hope you do. Again, I thank you for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to everyone coming to catch the fun.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Comment, supervisors, any questions, comments? Mr. Chair. Mr. Carroll.
Did, am I right in saying that we had record-breaking attendance last year?
We try to do that every year, and, yeah, and God willing, with Mother Nature, we'll do it again.
Okay.
Maybe she won't be so hot and rainy, so keep your fingers and your toes crossed.
We'll pray for that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you first so much for being here, Brenda. Thanks for the update on the security, defense, and I appreciate that.
Much, much needed and much appreciated.
Yes, I appreciate your comment on that, and if there's anything else we can do as a Board, please let us know. We look forward to a great experience.
Be careful what you ask for. That's what I always say.
Okay, okay. He did say that. Yeah, I am, I stand by it. But anyway, so, anyway, thank you again for being here. We look forward to the fair, and thanks for sharing the dates, the 23rd through the 30th and 31st of August. Congratulations, and all the best in your endeavor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'd like to additionally recognize Brenda, and we also have some other guests here, all representing the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission, so Brenda obviously is the chair and is also representing the Bermuda District. Kathy Chealy is here, also from the Bermuda District. We have Billy Pep from Matoka, and Stuart Broth from Cloverhill. So thank you all for coming out this afternoon, taking time out to be here with, with us and the Board for this annual update. I'm gonna get started with, it's, it's always nice when we're able to come and give our annual update as, as part of the July meeting, because July has historically been designated as National Parks and Recreation Month by the National Recreation and Park Association. This year's theme, you see the logo up there, is Where You Belong, and I really like that in, in thinking about this presentation or this update to, to talk to you all, because I'm a firm believer that you can't get where you're going if you don't know where you want to go, and more importantly, the why behind your making the journey. And I think this, Where You Belong, is a thematic element. I really want to weave into the story I'm gonna tell, because what we're trying to do here as a department is to really leverage the value for the community of their recreational time, their assets, that they've entrusted us with, so that's physical space, as well as the, the human capital that we put into making these, these parks and these programs and, and everything we do really be meaningful for the, for the community. So, that message really does, I think, align well with why we are, or who we are, and why we do what we do. One interlude on our, this is a little bit of a brag slide, but we have our college interns here, but we also, as a department, have been working and with the school system in their work-based learning program. We started this last year very intentionally, as you all probably are well aware. We have a great need for seasonal help, and that younger workforce can sometimes be hard to, to pin down, so we partnered with the work-based learning program, and these are paid jobs essentially that we have in all of our different areas, so they're paid as many hours as they're able and willing to work, but they also qualify because they've had to go through the vetting process with their guidance counselor and a sponsoring teacher through a program, so they are getting that, that academic credit as well. And it's a mix. We've got 13 currently working for us. They're coming from nine high school programs across the county. Some of them are in the, the technical education realm, looking to do, like the gentleman who's working with the sports crew, that very may be what he wants to, to begin doing immediately after. We have a lot of other students that are in a diploma track, and they're getting real, real work, work experience, and I think it, on both fronts, is a great program, because as a parent of young adults myself, I, I think the academic preparation is great, but there's something to be said for real-world preparation as well, so we're, we're glad to have this program and certainly appreciate all the support we've gotten from our school partners. Another brag slide, you heard the introduction, this is a group shot of the, the folks at opening, opening day at Daniel Park. One thing I'd like to say before leaving this topic, the recognition greatly appreciated, the why behind what they do, I, I know we have our friends from sports and visitation here, so we do like to roll out a nice welcome mat for our visitors, but the real reason we do this is for our residents, and even this week, as you look outside, we've been, this work group has been working because the youth softball group, the Chesterfield Youth Softball, is finishing up their season. The weather is not exactly cooperative, so we are on notice to be able to help them complete their, their games so that they can finish out the season, so it really is reflective, I think, of what we're trying to do in philosophically, to be more present in our parks and our park operations when people are out there, because the real work for us is out there supporting the activities across the board, so it's not just sports operation, it's making sure the parks are clean, that restrooms are clean, you know, all those fundamental needs are absolutely critical to, again, defining a nice place to belong for, for our residents. Now I'm gonna dive in a little, a little deeper into kind of where we've been. This has been an ongoing project, it's being led out of Stewart Conex Group, but it's time for us to update our comprehensive master plan. We haven't gotten into the planning piece yet, but last, in, in the last six months, we wrapped up. wrapped up about a year-long process to go out with the School of Government, Wilder School of Government, on a comprehensive citizen survey. It is, was performed by them as a, it is a true probability sample, so it's a representative sample of the population of Chesterfield. We asked a number of questions. It's all posted up on our website. We actually updated our park commission, I think, two meetings ago. I'm gonna give you a couple of quick highlights that I think are relevant to the update before you today. One series of questions we asked was basically to tell, or to tell us how well we're doing on some important metrics. I think the safety piece speaks for itself. I know Brad was here earlier. We work a lot with police because we want to make sure that our parks have a visible presence and what we do in the parks with our community. We want people first and foremost to feel safe. The inclusion piece is also important, Where You Belong. That's a measurement of largely on the programming side and the activities we support. We wanted to get to a question that sort of rated us on how well we're doing in that space. Was pleased with the results there. And then the facility assessment, there was, that's just a sample. We asked a whole host. That was rated on a scale of one to four. I see and there's some good news and I see some opportunities. The restroom is not where I would like it to be, but that is a concerted effort operationally. But as you'll hear later in my presentation, it's also about making reinvestments into existing infrastructure. So restrooms that are new, a lot of the restrooms we have in our current complement, you know, go back to the original founding of the park. And so it's much easier to have a nicer restroom when it's a little newer and a little refreshed. So you'll hear a lot in my story about reinvesting in our existing assets to recapitalize our parks so that the current generation of residents and park users has a good experience. The next slide, I really apologize, I know it's terrible death by PowerPoint form and you will get this report, but what here, the takeaway from this slide, we asked two series of questions against a whole host of activities and facilities that we provide. And on the left side of the slide and highlighted in green, that's a ranked ordering of activities or types of parks or facilities that we're in the business of working with that residents, again, from that probability sample, said that they regularly participate in. You can see the high one up there at 86% is biking, walking, those things. The right column basically shows an opportunity gap. We asked those same, that same question a little differently. We said, "What would you like to do more of if you had more resources, more opportunity?" And so the top ranked in terms of participation fall, it's still a high number, but they fall to the lower end of the spectrum when you ask those questions a little differently. The yellow are basically new opportunities for growth. You'll see things in there that are at the top of the want list. So things like summer camps, you know, offering more opportunities in summer camps, getting spray grounds, which we'll talk a little more about those. You know, we don't have any currently. We've got several in the works. You'll see, again, a lower participation, a higher mark in desire. So I put all this out there to just say, we are tracking very closely what we, we want to work for our residents and with our residents. So this is helpful information to make sure that we're staying in the lane that we need to as we, again, make this journey in terms of improving the quality of our park system. And again, I apologize for the bad form. I know it's small, but it's just, it is a very, very interesting story that tells us a lot. So thank you for indulging me.
Dr. Miller.
Just a quick question because I don't know what it is. What is footsaw?
Footsaw is a form of, it's a touch form of soccer. It basically is a smaller soccer ball, it's heavier.
Okay.
And it's more about ball control. We actually have a footsaw, we repurpose some courts, tennis courts, at Benzley Park. And so it's just a different form of soccer.
Awesome, thank you.
The other one up there is cricket. I thought, found that was fascinating. I mean, participation was under 2%, but the desire was in the teens. So again, it's a measurement of moving into some space and sort of a snapshot of are we going in the right direction? So. Now the fun stuff, and summer is a great, this is, I tell staff all the time, I love to speak before the, at the council orientation because everything we do over, we're closing out our camp program here beginning of August. All told, there's two slides here. These are images of the different camps we offer across a wide variety of programming. When we close the books, we'll have served just over 1,000 kids with a summer camp experience. And everything we do in the summer, I tell these counselors, they are the tip of our spear because everything we do is preparing them to be successful in their contact with these youth. The most powerful experience of all out of all these camps, and we have a whole range of offerings that we offer, is the relationships that they make with their counselors because these counselors are younger, they are a role model, an authority figure, but they're very different in, compared to a parent, a guardian, a grandparent, or even a teacher. So it is a very unique experience that we offer. As you saw on the measurement slide, it's an area that we have growth opportunity in. It takes human capital. It takes really that, the why behind what we do and the buy-in. I will say, in the top corner, left corner, that's an image from the 4H camp. That's the overnight camp. We take a group, this year it was just about 100 children. They go down to the 4H Center in Jamestown for the week. I volunteered my time. I was a counselor there for the week. I have never been to an overnight summer camp as a child. I didn't have that experience. That's terrible to say, but I had a great time. I learned a lot. I came home on the fourth. The week ran through the Friday. I came back on the fourth with every intention to making it to the Fourth of July event. I was asleep in my chair at about 6 o'clock. So, but again, it is something that is vitally important to what we do to, for our young boys and girls for the summer.
Yeah, just gonna mention, I mean, as someone who went to camp every summer, each day is equal to a week. So it's, I knew what you were gonna say, it's like, oh, I came back and I slept for a month. It was like, I don't, yeah, you're gonna be tired.
Cabin counselor with 30 boys between 9 and 13.
Yes.
And lights out at 10 and I don't think I ever got to sleep before about 1:30, so.
Yeah, no way. I spent summer as a counselor too, so yes.
But anyway, yeah, thank you. I want to highlight too, and again, this is important to what we do to connect with the community. I know you all have all been out and these activities that we provide really, to me, is one of the biggest bang for the buck that we get out of our investment in working with the community. It certainly makes good use of our parks as a physical asset and where we find opportunities to connect with the community, that's the space in which we meet in the middle. We've got some tried and true ones up there. This is just a snapshot image. Kite Day was one of our most successful kite days ever. I think we went through about 2,000 kites just like that. That was at River City. We also did the upper-left, we instituted our first, it was called the Snowball, Snowman Festival, winter event. Ironically, it was like 65 degrees and it got shortened by a thunderstorm of all things in February, but we still had over 2,000 people show up. And one of the lessons for that, and we've talked about this, we're, you're gonna see more, we want to bring more of these types of events even to River City because it's a great opportunity for the community to come together and have some fun and spend some time together as a family unit. And if you remember, again, from that poorly formed slide, that was rated very high on what people want. They want to spend time together with their, with their family and friends and this, these are great opportunities. We also did our inaugural, the Outdoor Fest, which was in partnership with the Sports Visitation Group. That's now gonna be benchmarked as a regular event for us. Good spring event. We got a lot of families show up out there. And I will say, aside from the February thunderstorm, we, in that span, were blessed with some pretty good weather, which certainly helped. So successful events are, there's a lot of hard work that goes into them, but weather is certainly the most important. Most recently, obviously, we did our longstanding July 4th. The weather, again, I was asleep in my armchair, but the weather was, we had a little bit of weather challenge. It's not unexpected. We still clicked in over 8,000 participants for July 4th. So that's a space that we're very grateful for the support we get to be in, so thank you. The other one, just to touch on, this is a sort of a variation on what we do in the event realm. We obviously do a lot to support historic resources and the narrative of history here in Chesterfield. And we do that largely by helping other organizations that are really kind of in the, in their lane with a particular area, bring their story a little more to life. So again, and Mr. Carroll, I know you, and I think Mrs. Snyder, you came down to the Eppen and Spring Festival. Weather was not as cooperative as we would have liked, but we had close to 500 people and it was a collaborative effort and those are the types of things we want to do more. Because I tell people all the time, in the history realm, you can tell the, you can share the entire narrative of the history of this country from pre-contact all the way through rural electrification by telling local stories on properties within Chesterfield County. So there is a very local touch to national events and history and timelines that we're well-positioned to do. So we are very much trying to bring the groups together and help them perhaps be a little more than they could be in terms of being intentional. So that's a space that, again, we occupy and we're very grateful for the support we get to be there. This is your subliminal advertising slide, just to mention that, and this is not an exhaustive list, but everything we do, most of the things we do are done in collaboration, so you'll see the Fair Association up there. You know, we are stewards, we manage property, we have human capital to do things, but a lot of times, the community connection, the nexus comes with a group that we work with. And again, not exhaustive, but all of these groups are valued partners in helping to provide, again, that you belong environment in terms of recreational space and leisure opportunities here in Chesterfield County. I'm gonna flip real quickly now and give you all a highlight on some projects. A lot of our narrative, as I know you all are well aware, is built around things that we're doing in the project space. This one is one, again, thanks especially to the board for the support and the initiative. Again, one of our partner groups sort of said, "Hey, why don't you?" And helped us get there. And we now are up to 40 AED units that are publicly, they're, you know, out in the weather, accessible for anybody who needs them. And as you're aware, we had a good story that came, a good outcome that came out of them. So we're very appreciative of that, again, the community and you all as elected leadership, helping us be in a space to make our parks a safer place to be. A couple of other planning level projects we have. This is a system-wide assessment, the checkmarks just sort of where we are. We've completed our fieldwork and we are waiting for the consultant team to sort of give us the final report. And then there is a public engagement component that will be led by Six Wheel Consulting. It basically is a study to measure how well our access within our park facilities are. And again, it's not just the measurement that matters to us, it's the spirit behind what it means to be inclusive. And so we do, we are touching not just, again, on those measurements, but on, on things like the accessibility of our web presence, how we, how we do our programming, you know, things in those spaces. So that report in its final form will come to you all in some fashion, probably winding up here in the fall. And then the other one, and I know, again, this is, you all are hopefully aware of this, but we have now an annual or requirements contract to be able to retain professional expertise to help us get a baseline condition assessment across our portfolio of built environment. We began with courts and that was, that's a collaborative or a, it's an inclusive assessment. We're, it's 40 locations, it's all of our courts, both within the school system and within the park system. And it's wrapping up, the fieldwork's been done. We are reviewing the initial draft reports. We've got some formatting, things to work through. A lot of the sites, I'll be honest, need some follow-up because we want to go, what we ultimately want to bring to you all, out of all these condition assessments, is a list from one to whatever that prioritizes how bad the conditions are and what the need is to get that particular facility back up to a like-new condition. And I'll be honest, on the courts, what we've seen is a lot of the courts, particularly at the high schools, it's gonna be a heavy lift to get there. The conditions aren't the greatest and it's not a maintenance problem, it's a capital reinvestment conversation. But again, you can't begin unless you know where you want to go. And so we're trying to flesh this study out to basically give everyone that needs to make these decisions a clear picture of what it's gonna take to get where we all would like to be. Now, some good news. We just opened a couple of parks. We've opened a few more this year. That's the rework or refresh of the little park, neighborhood park at Fernbrook on the right. And then the final phase of Hare Gate, we opened here a month ago, maybe. Time is flying by, but, but very well received by the community. What I'm gonna say on these slides, again, and you'll, I'll speak to these in the ongoing projects, we are really focusing on quality. We are focusing on looking at ways we can take existing park land and park resources and reinvest in a way that brings those parks back up to a standard and a level of connection for the community that they want and value. The other thing I'll mention before I transition, you backed these two completed projects out. We've had Mosley Elementary School Connector Trail, there's been some other ones. I'm gonna speak to Daniel, Ironbridge Park here in a minute. We still have 63 active capital projects on the books. So again, thanks to everything you all are doing, that's driven by dollars and we are very much in the business right now in this moment of time of being defined by taking our park system and finding what we need to do to make sure that the public can really belong there. That means investing in quality, investing in access to park land that hasn't been accessible before. So that is, again, what we are doing and a lot of effort. 63 projects is a lot in the capital realm because each one of those has a lot of complexities. But we love it when we can clip a ribbon. The Diamonds at Ironbridge was a great story for us. Six Field Complex had been long-term lease. When we got it, the condition was not nearly what we would like and when it came off of an operating lease, we took about $700,000 in appropriated capital, major maintenance dollars and began a project. And then thanks to you all, it was leveraged against some, a significant amount of the basically excess tourism revenue to make a $4 million overall investment of that. We're not finished. I'll speak to the next phase here in a minute. But you can see the lower left, that's a before and after of Field 6. I think the quality speaks for itself. And again, that team at the opening, that's a local team and I will continue to reiterate, it's great that visitors like to be here because they spend money and leave, but they help pay for things that our residents can really benefit for. So it's a pretty simple equation that we're very appreciative for the support we're getting. Current projects underway, and again, I'm not gonna touch on all 63 of them, I'm just gonna give you all a rolling highlight. And I apologize if I missed something that's important to you, but there's a lot going on. Buella, again, as everybody well knows, it's, it will be the first in the region, the first properly-sized cricket pitch for cricket. It can also be used for other sports and it's not shown on this slide, but it has a significant community face of it as well. It will be one of our first spray grounds. Mr. Holland has added some capital district improvement dollars to supplement that. So we are, we've got a community face here as well. The majority of the park is actually funded by ARPA with some supplements. We are on schedule, I just had a conversation, the sprigging should happen here probably in the next two weeks. They're wrapping up the irrigation, so the field is gonna open first. The amenity package for the- The amenity package for the community will be a ribbon cutting for spring of next year. River City Sportsplex, we've got a number of things going on out here. This is all, again, some, a combination of funding sources. This is the actual completion of the field portfolio. Under construction, those fields will be done and playable before Thanksgiving. Trying to really get them in before we have the big Thanksgiving field hockey tournament. It's four new fields, some additional parking in the back, and it's not shown on this graphic, but it also includes Front Field 6, I believe it is, that was originally built just for football. It'll be expanded out, so it's a true 360 by 180 dimension field for full soccer or any of the other sports that are on there. That's just one of many things that are going on at this location, but that one is actively under construction and well underway. Excuse me, this is another great example of some reinvestment. This is, again, at Huguenot Park. This is Katie and Friends Playground was one that I know my kids grew up on, it's tremendously popular with the community. It was fundraised with, you know, Katie's mom. Katie is now 32, I believe, still likes to swing. But we're coming through and between our major maintenance dollars supplemented by some of the district improvement funds, we're making almost a million dollars' worth of investment in replacing all the equipment. We're keeping all of the things that the volunteers put in back in the day, but giving the park a complete facelift. And the equipment's been ordered. Expecting to put up the "Park Closed For Renovation" sign probably middle of August, which is just around the corner. Hope to have a ribbon dedication later in the fall to reopen it up for the community. Just as a measure of popularity, when we did the survey that I mentioned first, you know, they had to go through a lot of exercise to get to about 1,000 as a representative sample. We put out on social media, "Give us your feedback about this park, the importance of this park, and what you'd like to see." I think we had 600, 700 responses, just like that. So a real testament to the popularity of this park, so we're excited about it. Cog Bell Park, brand-new park, ARPA project, community park. It's on your consent agenda tonight for a contract award, just over $3.3 million. Again, ARPA dollars. This park has been long-awaited by the community. I was not here, but I know there was a very long community involvement process, so we're glad to get this one into production. And again, with your approval and a notice to proceed, be able to do ribbon cutting here next summer. This one is a very exciting one. This is back at River City. This is, we're calling it "The Park at River City." We certainly are open to suggestions, but the idea here is a simple one. The area where the concert venue is currently located is going to be repurposed for, we've budgeted about $9 million in, conceptually what you see up here, they're not the best renderings, but it gives you the idea. It's a destination play area for multi-generational play area. It's built around full principles of inclusivity, and it's going to have a spray ground feature as well as multiple ages, a pavilion for people to, for multi-generation to congregate. Dollar-for-dollar, again, one of the great stories in knowing where we are and who we are, is by putting it on this dirt at River City, we've got $9 million, most of which, almost all of which can go into the actual play equipment and the development. We don't have to spend a lot of money on infrastructure, building a road, building a parking lot, bringing utilities to the site, because we're already in a location where all that's provided. And at this location, the value, it certainly will help put this complex a little more on the map, even more so with the, within the tourism market. But it now gives a lot of people locally, a reason to be in this space, even if their child is not playing soccer or things like that. So we're very excited about this one. This one is in the sign-off stage for permitting, should come to you all for a contract award. We'll bid it here a month, maybe, out. So November meeting, December meeting for a contract award and get going in the spring. Phase two, again, the Diamonds at Ironbridge. This, we opened the fields, very nice, but we've got funding, again, out of our, that additional allocation to complete the project, so to speak, which includes a wrap to give a more signature appearance to the one field there, stadium setting, as well as a restroom. And again, when I mentioned restrooms, our new model, fully compliant, conditioned, so that you're not walking into a restroom when it's 95 degrees and it's hot in there as well. We've got some new standards. One of the things we're doing for some of our restrooms is going to the individual stall model, where, I don't know if you've been in a state park, but that allows, instead of going into a men's, women's, or unisex, they're individual stalls. So everybody goes into a private restroom. That way, if you have a servicing need, you can take one offline without closing down the whole restroom. So again, what we're trying to do is reinvest with quality. River City, also, some additional funding that we had appropriated from years previous is Field 6 Championship Field. It also includes addressing some longstanding erosion issues that we've had there on the hillside, as well as some spectator amenities. So again, trying to differentiate this complex for local as well as visitation use. Bond money, we have almost nine, well, almost $10 million between some bond and general fund to invest in Horner Park. It's a great hidden resource. We are actually, on the left, is the concept for a new softball complex. But we also have earmarked out of appropriated major maintenance dollars, a million dollars to address the current field issues out there. And the bond project also funds, I've just shown the active component, but there is a community component as well. So another dog park, trails, picnic pavilions, playgrounds, all of those things that are important to a wider span of users. Again, appropriated and in initial design development.
Archery as well?
Yes, sir, archery. Again, wanted to touch real quickly, because earlier you saw that passive recreation is also very important. I didn't want to cheat that. We have a lot of things going on in that realm, too. Just a couple of quick highlights. The Greenwood property down on the Appomattox, right down in Ettrick Village, we're finishing the closing process on that. We have a million dollars in appropriated funds to begin that development. So I would imagine, at your pleasure, we're ready to go out and to begin some community conversations on SIA substantial in accord, and then ultimately a master plan for that site to move pretty quickly. We are, I think, finalizing what's needed to progress at Midlothian Mines to redo the headstock, and then are also working, again, collaboratively with those partner groups to have some discussions about future beyond just that reconstruction. We're in the space down at Point of Rocks. That is part of our access portfolio to open that site up for public visitation, but we also have some additional appropriation to take the Stracken House there that you see in the center and do a restoration, so that it is taken from its current mothballed status up to a level where it can be actually opened up for tours. And then on the right, just a reminder, we're also very cognizant of the need to improve river access, and we've got a lot going on in that space. It's tough graphically to show it, but we've got between the bond money for the Falling Creek Park, as well as the Dominion Energy Consent Dollars. We are well on our way to making improvements where Falling Creek comes into the James River. That is actually what you see on the right. I know it's hard to see, but it is an engineered, about a 30% engineered drawing for what the boat access would look like that. It's a keyhole slip, you can see in blue there. So when you launch a boat, you're not in the river, you're in slack water. And it's got paved parking and circulation. And then again, we have another park component that's funded by the bond that'll take the bluffs and turn them into a more passive, you know, passive picnicking-type park. So a lot of work in that space. The other access projects off of the bond include opening up for the first-time Providence Road Park, Atkins Acres, which is just over in the Dale District behind the airport, as well as the Swift Creek Conservation Area, which is where Swift Creek comes into the Appomattox. It's a beautiful piece of property, opens up a tremendous amount of potential for birding, birdwatching, and walking or hiking, as well as paddling access. Touch on real quickly, the Lower James. This is now an amalgamation, a lot of conversations, I know as you all as a board are aware, we've sort of taken a step back and said, okay, we have the Dutch Gap Conservation Area, we have the, you know, EDA property on the other side, we've got Henricus as a unit, we know Dominion is changing the landscape down there. Let's go ahead and think of it all in its entirety as a comprehensive unit and make some best decisions about the overall property, instead of piecemealing things going forward. We know we need a road that is under design, we know we need to provide access, boating access, that's funded and under design. We know we need to address the issues that Henricus has with the impact of the Dominion Project. But overall, if you look at it, we're almost 1,100 acres of publicly-owned land down there. It's got conservation value, it's got historical significance, it's a beautiful piece of property. And so this slide is just to say, we are now comprehensively looking at what we can do down there, and obviously keep you all well apprised of milestones as we move down that path. Real quickly, these are just some, they're major projects for us. We've, again, at Robius, this is the home of Huguenot Little League. We are completing this year, or will complete this year, a complete field renovation. We've done it two at a time, but we also are finishing up a replacement for their restroom building, which is, I think, original to the park, so it's vintage 1980. It's in dire need of some, it's basically a scrape and rebuild. And we also have, and again, a variety of funding sources. Graphically, there in the top left, we have ARPA dollars that are being used to provide a spray ground at Benzley Park. The athletic field there is also being lighted, the poles are here, the electrician is juggling other work, but that will, the field will be lighted before we get to the end of August. And the spray ground, again, will be a spring/summer of next year opening. We have in the appropriated FYI capital, $800,000 line item to do Ettrick Village Park, which is the front of the school there. It's a placemaking park, it's a plaza, it's a signature area for the community. And then the bottom two slides, on the right, we, Lowe's Complex, if you all are familiar with that, off of Route 10, had been under a long-term lease with the Strikers. They have relinquished that lease, and so now we are moving in with ARPA dollars to make some needed improvements. A restroom and parking are top of the list. Those dollars will be encumbered in that project underway by fall. And then on the left, as I mentioned, with appropriated major maintenance dollars, we've got two restroom projects we've identified as prioritization. These are, again, complete scrape-off and replacements. So one at Dodd Park and the one at Huguenot Park are both in, well past their usable life and need to be replaced. And then finally, I'm going to end up on a great story that I'm excited about, Rockwood Park. You know, I've got, that park is, I tried to find, we tried to find some vintage slides. That park was the first park, it opened in 1976, '77?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. And so it's coming up on 50 years. It'll be 50 years in July. And we've allocated a million and a half dollars in appropriated major maintenance to get in there and do some work. And again, just like Daniel, it's a great opportunity for, you know, anything else that we can bring down the pipeline as we are, you know, in that space. It's kind of like starting to paint a room and realizing you need to replace the molding and, you know, you can really get into it. But the park is heavily used, certainly the success of the Latino farmers market has been wonderful. And we have the opportunity, there's just so much going on in that park. Again, this is an opportunity, a moment in time for us to really make this park come back and ready for the next 50 years. So that is what I have for you all, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Questions, comments, supervisors?
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Well, I was going to talk to the interns, he has one of the coolest jobs. And, you know, thank you for the work that you're doing. It's funny, because I was making a list of the things I'm hoping he catches, and you just checked them right off my list. Thank you for the hard work you're doing, your staff. It's just incredible. It makes Chesterfield such an incredibly quality place to live. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Other supervisors? Other comments? Yes, Snyder, please.
So I was at the Fourth of July thing, and I got there early and got on lockdown, and so I had the fun of hanging out with your staff and had an awesome time, just sitting down, talking with them. I helped them put together some pinwheels, they're just like, oh my gosh, you're going to help. It was great, just talking with them. They have such enthusiasm. I helped Sharon and Marley put together the arch that got blown over during the storm. It was just awesome, just to participate in the excitement of you guys and what, I mean, they're all, like I said, very enthusiastic about what they're doing, so something is being done right, obviously, so.
Thank you, supervisor. Anyone else? Miss Angell?
So there's obviously a lot of work being done around the whole county. Very interesting, everything in my district. I know you had a meeting earlier today with the citizen, and I just wanted to read the first sentence of his email to me. "While the plan for the ramp and parking is actually very good, Neil and Stuart really listened and made changes." That's a pretty big statement from the person, so I appreciate all your hard work, everything you're doing in all the areas in the county, especially in the Bermuda District.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
I think it was yesterday in a meeting, I told you, what your staff and what your department is doing is amazing. People really don't realize, and that was a great summary of many of the things you're doing, but people don't realize just how big Chesterfield County is and how big our park system is and how much it's utilized. And I think, you know, we did some informational videos, I think, two years ago, trying to push out to the community about all the parks that are available for people. And I still get people that send me emails, like, "We don't have enough parks." So again, your staff's doing a great job, and I think that there's a lot of great things coming, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. I just want to thank you for being here, Neil. I appreciate you covering ADA compliant, I think that's so very important. And I applaud you for the high school interns and college interns to earn and learn. I applaud that, let's continue to do that well. And I look forward to hearing an update on the bathroom situation, get it from 2.7 to, let's get over three by the next time we see it. So anyway, good go, great job, outstanding work for the county, tremendous job. So thank you so much for being here, and we appreciate the presentation. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
See school safety update, Dr. Warsley.
We're ecstatic to be here today to talk about a school safety update. As a parent, here in Chesterfield County with two students that are still in Chesterfield County Public Schools, people say you don't necessarily want to know how the sausage is made. I'm one of those people. I'm glad I know how the sausage is made because the schools and our folks and our teams are doing a dynamic job. And I think you're going to get opportunity to see that here today as our presenters on our Human Services Team, representing schools, DSS, as well as Mental Health Support Services and Police come together as we have to give you this presentation. So first, as we begin to kick things off this afternoon, to talk about school safety update, we're going to have Dr. John Murray, who is going to be talking about the schools overall, giving us a little wraparound services of what to expect as schools begin to open back up, and safety measures that have been put into place as well. Followed by him, we're going to move to also having our Social Services Director, Ms. Rogers is going to come, and she's going to give you a little opportunity to take a peek and see how social services also support schools and the partnerships that are there within. And then followed by her, we're going to have Mental Health Support Services, that's also going to present, Ms. Kelly Freep is going to- going to present, Ms. Kelly Freep is going to also talk about how Mental Health Support Services support our schools, not just during the school day, but also partnering with the partners as well as after-school time. And then following culminating this experience is going to be none other than our acting Police Chief Badgero, who is also going to wrap this up, talking about what school, excuse me, what police is doing, what the MOU looks like, changes that have been made, and perhaps invite you to an upcoming event that he's going to share with you at a later time. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Murray.
All right, thank you. Welcome. Good to see you all.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Board members, Dr. Casey, thank you for the invitation to come and share a little bit about school and campus safety. I'm John Murray, Deputy Superintendent, I know you gave me the interim role when you introduced me originally, Mr. Holland, I've got another week with Dr. Doherty before that happens, but I appreciate it. So no doubt, campus safety, to include addressing individual needs, has been, has seen significant evolution and attention over the past, say, 25 years, but in particular, more recently, as we've endured national trends pertaining to school violence, mental health, substance abuse, et cetera, and Chesterfield is not insulated from such issues. As such, along with high-quality instruction, safety remains our highest priority. So this first slide, and the slides to follow, in fact, offers a peek at some of the focal areas currently and over the past year. And while not an exhaustive list, I would like to highlight some of our physical safety enhancements first. But I'll pause to mention that what you won't notice here are some of the tried and true, the longstanding initiatives like emergency response plans, or faculty ID badges, or code of student conduct, things of the like Raptor technology, which screens for sex offenders upon entry, visitor policies, but rather things that are newer and shinier to our school division. So foremost, thank you to the board for your assistance, bullet one, in helping to fund school security officers for our elementary schools, where SROs, as you know, are not assigned. Parents have been advocating for this human resource for quite some time, and these positions will be integral in maintaining optimal safety. I'm pleased to report that over the past week, we had an overwhelming response to our vacancy notices and have filled 50 of the 52 positions. So that's incredibly exciting for us. Additional projects include our vestibule and secured entryways, of which we are in the final completion phase. School security cameras have been successfully installed at the remaining schools that did not have them, as well as enhanced camera systems at many of our secondary schools, and that project will continue throughout the upcoming school year. Procurement of shatterproof and screening film for our school windows, and the school bus stop arm camera evaluation, and thank you for your advocacy on that project, Mr. Carroll. As well, we have enjoyed our regular communication and alignment meetings with CPD, DSS, and MHSS, which included MOU dialogue and revisions. I should mention that CCPS continues to solicit parent feedback through August 4th regarding the MOU, at which point any feedback will be reviewed and considered by the board and other pertinent entities. Moving on, this slide highlights some of our previous areas of focus that continue to be implemented in the school division, again pertaining to physical safety. Examples include full-time registered nurses at each of our schools, AED replacements, and the purchase of portable units to support outside activities, and we maintain stock epinephrine, albuterol, and Narcan on-site. Our building points of access are FOB and doorbell controlled, building staff continue to relay emergency matters via the Rave app, and preventative maintenance audits and safety inspections by our staff have helped to more immediately identify needed action pertaining to playgrounds, stadiums, water quality, electrical needs, and fire panel replacements. Certain staff also participate in annual threat assessment training, assisting in identifying threat levels and appropriate next steps, which is a good topical segue into some of our social, emotional, and mental health safety initiatives, as we acknowledge that safety mechanisms must not only be addressed in physical form. Gaggle, while a reactionary tool, is a resource that alerts school officials to words, images, or searches on a student's Chromebook that suggests troublesome thoughts or behaviors that warrant a deeper evaluation, to specifically include but not limited to threats to self or others. And we have increased our school counseling and mental health service staffing beyond what is prescribed via the VDOE standards of quality, to assist in meeting the increasing support and mental health needs of our students. We also proactively supplement our time with students, embedding curriculum and lessons such as sources of strength, signs of suicide, the DEVERO Student Strengths Assessment Screener, substance abuse awareness, PBIS, and digital citizenship modules, in an effort to deepen students' general knowledge while also growing their muscles of self-awareness, advocacy, and resilience. Our Recovery Academy, the first of its kind in the Commonwealth, is a great testament to these goals, while providing extensive wraparound services in addressing addiction and any tethered mental health need. Finally, I'll highlight our Promote Respect program, which is tailored by school to inform students, parents, and staff on bullying, as well as the means by which to report. Once more, what I've shared is fairly extensive but not all-encompassing, and hopefully you each can see that when we say safety is our top priority, in fact it is. So thank you.
Just to build a little more on what Dr. Murray just presented, our prevention program is really, really involved in the schools, and so when schools go out at the end of the year, it's really just a starting point for our prevention team. They're working with the teachers, they're working, looking at the curriculum that they presented last year, and trying to modify that into what might be needed for the current school year. And so just to give you an idea, there are classroom lessons for students in elementary, middle, and high school that are across a number of topics. For example, 226 different lessons were presented last year in the schools. In the elementary school, there's classes about bullying, there's classes about, you know, substance use in the upper grades like fifth grade, there's lessons on violence. In the middle school, you're getting lessons about the signs of suicide that Dr. Murray mentioned, I think there were 117 lessons that were presented last year in the middle schools. In the high school, there were 106 lessons presented there around signs of suicide, they go deeper into anger management, understanding mental health, there's just a number of prevention programs or lessons that are taught with the students. There's also small group classes that are needed, or potentially needed for students, I think there were 45 of those that were presented or occurred last year. It can be on things such as friendship, grief, social skills, stress and anxiety, divorce, separation, all kinds of topics that students might be dealing with in the home or at school. There are adult classes that are presented for parents, there's parent consultations that occur for parents that are needing any type of consultation around their children's needs, or maybe something with the family as a whole. There's school personnel training, so prevention staff are actually training teachers, there's things on surrounding substance use, trauma stewardship, enhancing your wellness, just a number of topics, again, where our staff are working directly with the teachers. And just in June, Lauren Liestad, who is our Substance Use Response Coordinator, she trained a number of PE teachers around substance use trends, risk, and protective factors during a professional development day. Moving on a little bit to 988 and co-response, so I'm going to give a more deeper presentation on this in September when our CSB presents to the board, but there is a tie-in to the schools. And so last year, as you know, over the past year, we implemented the Marcus Alert Protocols, which was also tying in 988 to our 911 system here in Chesterfield. And so there's a ton of calls, as you can see, just over the first year, there were over 2,700 calls, almost 2,800 calls, that 988 answered on behalf of Chesterfield. When you look down a little bit further, we implemented co-response teams, so that's where our crisis staff and our police go out together into the community to address calls, and so of the 2,800, almost 450 calls were handled by our co-response team. Of that, we were able to divert hospitalizations in 54%, I think it might even be a little bit higher than that, but that was the latest numbers that were presented. But when you look at these other factors, .04% resulted in arrest, and less than 1% involved juveniles. But we do know that there have been some mental health challenges, quite a few mental health challenges with students, and that's where our co-response team has played a pivotal role in really getting integrated with the schools over the past year. And so just, as you'll see there, Matoka Elementary did a thank you breakfast for the co-response team, just for a lot of assistance that they had provided to some students there. But there were trainings and things that occurred so that all of the teachers and the schools could become aware of our co-response services, because on average, last year, I think maybe five to seven calls a month that we had, that were involving students directly in the schools. But what's cool about this is that the 911 system, 911, 988, the school system, mental health, and our mobile crisis programs are all integrated together. So if 988 gets a call involving a student, and it's less likely it would be directly unless it's after hours, if it's after hours, that might be the case, but during the day of schools are calling, all of these partners are working together to address the student need immediately. And so we have REACH, which is a mobile crisis, a regional mobile crisis service, as well as CREST, we're all integrated together, and they see us, they see the schools and mental health as being a key partner. And so we get priority service for a lot of these needs when we're trying to solve things with students. So we have been seeing some really good success over the past year since the co-response teams have been integrated along with our 988 partners. There is going to be specifically for students for this upcoming school year, and actually they're working on it now, a specific 988 campaign. It's actually going to be a 988 campaign across the state, but specifically here in Chesterfield, our teams are already working together to provide a specific targeted campaign for youth. And so some of the strategies that they're currently working on is incorporating 988 messaging into the signs of suicide lessons, so the lessons that we were talking about that we do, 988 messaging is going to be incorporated into those trainings, there's going to be presentations delivered about 988 to additional grade levels and to parents that do not receive these signs of suicide lessons. They're going to include information about 988 on the Chesterfield School System Mental Health Hub being created by the school counseling program, they're exploring putting 988 on the back of student ID cards, there's social media messaging that's going to occur to parents, there's 988 materials that will be in school counseling suites, there's going to be targeted messaging to student athletes, and they're also going to be targeted messaging to youth who are homeless and in foster care along with their families. So this is just a number of things that are currently being worked on, but again, we've seen a strong partnership here with the development of this system, and I'm really proud when we're looking at the outcomes that are occurring from the 988 and co-response programs. Moving on to Recovery Academy, so as Dr. Murray mentioned, this is a key program in the schools, it is the first here in Virginia, and a strong partnership that we have with the school system in delivering the services to these students. So this is our second year of completing an academic year, we had 38 students that were served this past year in the school. We completed, or 10 students graduated from the program, but all students graduated or completed their current grade level. 15 students gained employment, there were over 200 clinical and recovery groups that were provided to students, there were over 1,500 individual clinical sessions that were provided to students, and that's just in this past year, not over the two years, these are last year results. And then students achieved over 79 months of sobriety. We do know that we have 12 students that are enrolled for this upcoming year as of right now, we have others that are currently in the intake process, and so we know that additional students will be coming into the program once school starts. We also have integrated peer services into this program, it's very important to do that, and so we're partnering with Recovery Corps, and so they provide or conduct a lot of groups for the students, and they also do a lot of after-hours work with the students, it's not just during the school day. And also, you know, in the summertime, there's a number of students that are in summer school, but those students that are not in summer school, there's virtual groups with them every week, virtual check-ins, and then also the alumni from the program also have the opportunity to come back and have groups and check-ins with the team as well, so. I will turn it over to Kiva.
All right. Child Protective Services is, thank you, Dr. Casey. Child Protective Services is another piece of how we ensure the safety and well-being of children in our community. To do this work well, it really takes the collaboration and coordination among many departments, those that are here at the table, as well as some that are not, such as the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, the Child Advocacy Center, and quite frankly, the community. The community plays a huge role in helping us to identify concerns of children. And so many of the areas that I mentioned, we have our own rules and regulations that guide our work, many have statutory requirements that we have to abide by. And so what we've done in Chesterfield is really created a roadmap that helps us to align all of our mutual responsibilities and statutory requirements in a way that allows us to work more seamlessly, more efficiently, and creates the best experience for any child or family that's going through a child protective situation. In FY24, we did update a previous memorandum of understanding with Chesterfield County Public Schools, and we also created our first memorandum of understanding with the Police Department, we did not have that initially. Within both of those agreements, one of the enhancements that was made was, previous agreements were silent on the presence of other agreements, and so schools and police will talk about that they have an agreement that they're working on. And so what we did in the two agreements with social services and schools and the police, was we referenced the presence of the other agreement in any area where there was intersection in the work that we do. Again, a way to try to create as much collaboration and understanding of the work that we do. Also in those agreements are various best practices. So one is that doing this work is best for kids to only be interviewed once. Each of us has the responsibility of conducting the interview, social services has to do interview, schools have their own investigations they have to do, and police as well. And so what the memorandum of understanding really does is helps us to understand, how do we do this so that kids don't have to go through multiple investigations? And so that, those values are embedded within the memorandums of understanding that we have created. One of the areas that's also in the MOU, it talks about making reports. Schools are mandated reporters, many of us are mandated reporters, and so one of the things that social services has a responsibility of doing is providing mandated reporter training, helping the community as well as educators and law enforcement, everyone who may see a child who could be at risk or be experiencing a safety issue. What we do is provide mandated reporter training that helps individuals to know what we need at the time of a referral, to give us the best chance of being able to intervene, because we do have statutory requirements that limit or identify situations where we are able to intervene. Where we're not able to intervene, there are times when we give it to our partners in law enforcement who have different ways that they can intervene that schools or social services may not have. And so the MOU really speaks to that, as well as the mandated reporter training, really tries to help educate the reporter, so that we're teaching them what our rules are, and they can give us the best information so that we can protect kids. In FY24, we completed about, we trained about 250 educators were trained. We have also added a collaborative approach to the training where we trained with Chesterfield Police Department as well. And our largest group that we had in FY24 was with principals, was our largest group, it was about 75 folks who we trained at that time. To do this work well, it requires that we stay in contact with each other, that we're talking, that we're... talking, that we're sharing information. And what was mentioned earlier is about a group that we call the Communication and Problem Solving Group. This is really a leadership group that's coming together regularly to identify any barriers that our staff may be facing on the front lines, and for us to do our part as leaders to figure out, how do we remove those barriers? Oftentimes, we have to bring in county attorneys or school attorneys. Again, as I said, we have requirements that, where we would like to have some flexibility, sometimes the law doesn't allow us to have that flexibility, and so we just hash that out so that our folks on the front line don't have barriers that are preventing them from doing the best job in protecting kids. And so what I will do is transfer it over to police, because they actually lead that group.
As I try to wrap things up here for y'all, I want to, first of all, remind you that a couple of the reasons that we exist as a police department are to, one, protect the vulnerable, and two, to establish problem-solving partnerships. And what you're hearing today is a very nice synthesis of those two priorities coming together. Because who can say that anything, our students are the most vulnerable population that we have in the county? And to have a group of folks, like, sitting next to me who have established partnerships to work on ways to smooth things out, as Kiva mentioned, to remove those barriers, and to do everything that we can to work towards safety for our student population is just key. And something that she mentioned about the group that police and all the different agencies represented here, plus the Commonwealth Attorney and the county attorney and school board attorney, that's been going on for about a year now. And some of the stuff that you have already heard about and the things that I will talk about are a culmination of that partnership. So it's at the leadership level, but also boots on the ground that are making sure that we get this done right for our community. That's a little bit smaller than I thought it was going to be on this slide. But one of the things that you think about when you think about the police is how we interact with the community in a lot of different ways and wear many hats. So what I'm going to try to do is take a few of those hats and just give you a broad overview of kind of where we are and how we intersect with other agencies, but also with the community as a whole. So I know you're aware of our Chesterfield Police Activities League, and that bullet right there gives you a little bit of an idea of what's been going on there. Mr. Luther was just up here talking about Parks and Rec, and we have a number of our folks that are right now, today, working on one of those camps with the Parks and Rec folks, and they'll be doing that for the next couple of weeks, actually, and throughout the summer, that interact with a lot of different agencies throughout the department to give students an opportunity to get out, get active, maybe not be somewhere where they're going to get in trouble, things like that, but also to see the police in a mentor role, that we can come alongside and partner with them and have fun. And a lot of different ways that we do that are listed there. The second bullet is just highlighting our cadet program. It used to be called our Explorers, but that's an opportunity for students in the community from all areas to come together, get to know what the police is a little bit, kind of like a club, but it's a little more organized than just a club, and you can see where they are involved in a lot of different meetings, a lot of different activities. And one of the ways that we see benefit from this is a number of our cadets have gone on to become police service aides or officers joining our ranks, and so we really think that that's a good program to continue. And then I wanted to highlight, this is something that may not always get much attention, but our child safety office. So in our safety section of the police department, child safety, we have our SRO side of things, we have our child safety. And those are, our child safety officers are the ones who are in the elementary schools. And so the SROs are in the middle and high, and our child safety officers, professional staff, are in our elementary schools. And one of the things I really want to highlight on this bullet here is that we have a program called the STEP Program. It's been in existence for years and years. A number of years ago, Department of Criminal Justice Services got wind of our program here in Chesterfield and said, wow, this looks really good. Can we start having some talks with you? And in August, I just had a meeting with those folks. They tell me that the governor is getting ready to sign an order to take our STEP Program. It's going to be titled Be Safe Virginia, but it's our STEP Program, some tweaks to it, but it's going to be implemented across the Commonwealth. And so we're very proud of that interaction and proud of that, what will be an accolade there. And as I get word of what's going to happen out of the governor's office, I'll make sure to let everybody know what is coming, but I just got that announcement earlier this week. So those are just a few ways our school safety unit interacts with our community. Maybe some way that we don't necessarily think about school safety, but it's the tech side of things that we are involved in on the police side. I know in a couple of board meetings passed, there was a discussion about maps and how are, where are our maps, and how are they accessible and things like that. Partnering with Dr. Murray's folks, they budgeted the money to pay for company to come in and do some very high-tech mapping of each of the schools. All of those maps are available on our CAD system and are accessible to our patrol and intel units so that if we need to deploy quickly, we can deploy in the right way and know where things are, door numbers, hallways, all that kind of thing. So that's done. That's a really strong partnership with Dr. Murray's folks. As Dr. Murray talked about, integrating cameras. 10 schools are online, and there's a remainder to have the rest brought online. These are agreements that are in place that are not for day-to-day monitoring, that kind of thing. It's in the event of a crisis, in the event of an emergency, we will have access to see what's going on in a school governed by some rules of order. But that's a much better improvement from where we are today, and we really look forward to completing that and then working with schools on that integration. And something that is a rather new project is, in the next several weeks, we will roll out our school zone enforcement camera program. They're going to be deployed at 10 locations to start, and again, another partnership with CCPS and ways we can keep that population safe. But that is just brand-new, and it's coming up for the start of the school year. Again, a little bit smaller than I thought it might be, but I'm going to let you guys read that on your own, but bottom line is, for the MOU, again, when we, we've had an existing MOU for years and years, right? About five or six years ago, we really revamped some things and made a working document better. And then here we are, this summer, as Dr. Murray mentioned, that there is a draft that is out for public review right now, and we have made what is a good document even better by looking at some of the language, really highlighting the partnership that we share, not so much focusing on the differences of what our work groups do, but on the similarities and how we can work together to keep our students safe. There are a number of things on that slide that speak to that in particular, and many of those have already been mentioned, as far as the school security officers, their implementation and how we're going to interact with them, how police should or should not deal with certain populations within the school, things that were already there, but we just kind of shored up and tweaked, things about how our unit is organized, the therapy dog that many of you are familiar with, how we can use that or not. And then outside of that, oh, and like Kiva mentioned, this one is a big one, is utilizing a universal form for CPS-related activities in the schools. Many, many years ago, I was a detective in what is now our vulnerable populations, and there's always some measure of, okay, well, who's going to do what, and, you know, at what school, you get a different reaction, and things like that. We are really working to streamline that, and I can tell you that the work group that Kiva mentioned, and I've had meetings with Dr. Murray and his staff, we're really moving towards just streamlining that and making it easy on all the frontline workers. And what does that do? That makes things easier on the student population and makes that whole process more seamless and better for everybody involved. So that's the highlight view. We're really pleased with where the MOU is headed and where we are. That's not always the case in all jurisdictions from working through some of these best practices, and we're just very fortunate to have worked through that very well this go-around. And then finally, an invitation to all who are here and who might see this online. Everybody's familiar with the National Night Out, and for the past, I don't know, I'd want to say 10, 15 years, we've ranked in the top 10 for communities greater than 300,000. And last year, we were number four. I'd love to see us be on the podium this year, right? And one, two, or three, we'll see where we go. But that is a testament to not only how our government interacts and works together, but also how we interact with the community and the support that we have and the relationships that we've established. So that can't happen without everybody who hears my voice right now coming together and working together to make sure that we continue that for Chesterfield. So two weeks from yesterday is when that is, and so hopefully you'll have some time. And if anybody wants to come out and ride with a police officer or, you know, have an escort, let me know, and we can make that happen. Okay? Thanks very much.
Thank you all. Appreciate questions. Oh, you have it on the board there. Great, so I don't have to say it. You can see it. Questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I did have one question. Where are we at on implementation of cameras on buses for people trying to pass buses when the stop arms are out?
Yep. As Dr. Murray mentioned, we are still in the procurement process for looking at that program, but cameras are part of the discussion in that as well.
Okay. Other questions? Yes. Supervisor Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, both of those programs, whether it's the camera program we asked for on the school buses, or even this program for, you know, being able to identify people who are speeding in the school zones. I want the community to understand and know that the ultimate goal is to make $0 on this, right? It's all about safety for the community and safety for the kids. We have several locations, and I want from my district up off of Fox School Parkway, where we put not just the speed trailers that the police department provides, but we actually have permanent speed signs in place. And, you know, when they first go in, people see them, and then they think, oh, I've got to slow down, and then, so they've been effective. But I think people need to, and again, I'm glad we're going to do a public information campaign on this, because people may get confused and say, oh, yeah, it's just that speed sign. No, this is the one that comes with a ticket, and so they need to pay attention. So I'm glad that we're moving forward with those programs, and it's not about trying to get tax revenue for anybody who might think that. It's about keeping our children safe and reminding people to slow down in school zones. It's pretty simple, really. If we could, truth of the matter is, I wish we'd make no money on tickets, because that means that everybody is obeying the law, and we don't have to write any. So I look forward to those programs being instituted, and I'm glad that the MOU process is going well this year. I think that's extremely important, and the collaboration is excellent. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll.
Dr. Mello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question for Dr. Murray and Ms. Fried. I'm curious to know, where do you see gaps in services? Are there services that you would like to see implemented to continue to support that you haven't entertained at this point?
If anything jumps to your mind, feel free to jump in. I feel like in schools, we are very fortunate to have great partnerships of experts, and we feel very knowledge and made available to any resource or next best service or best practice that we should be implementing. So I don't feel like CCPS has not done its due diligence, and we have, in fact, been critiqued by some parents as doing too much in the spirit of mental health, for what that's worth. So I think we're doing a pretty good job as it pertains to service provisions.
I would agree. I mean, I think, you know, and I have my team here, Melissa Ackley, Julie Cox, and Dr. Lauren McGruder, I mean, they are very integrated in the schools. I missed it on my slide about the collaborative meetings, but I think Dr. Murray mentioned that. They're meeting monthly, sometimes more than, you know, multiple times in a quarter, just really trying to see where those gaps might be. And, you know, if we talked individually with them, they may mention a few things that we could do, but I think overall, I think we have a pretty strong partnership and are really, you know, I think the 988 and the co-response, I mean, that's really put a lot in our community that we didn't have before, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Is that only schools or is that county?
Countywide. Countywide. Right, right. Very few for the schools. I mean, it's incorporated in that number, but it's countywide, yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Carroll?
When you get a chance, can you send us a list of the schools where those cameras are going to go up? Thanks.
Yeah, I applaud that. Thank you for that question and comment. I applaud this, a data-driven decision, and we want to see what data underlies that decision. I do. Thank you very much for that. And thank you all for being here and for the presentation and for all the good work you're doing. Keep up the great work as we attempt to pursue excellence. Thank you.
Item D, Blueprint Chesterfield Update, Mr. Harris and Mr. Bruni.
Mr. Chair, this is, this will be a brief work session, joined by our chief learning officer, Kevin Bruni, and really circling back to your board retreat that you had earlier this year, to give you a little update on our Blueprint Chesterfield, which, you know, in simpler terms, is the county strategic plan. We are in front of you in July, because this is, you know, our start of our new year from a fiscal perspective, and that's when the new plan goes into place. So just want to highlight a few things for you. I'm going to let Mr. Bruni open to kind of talk a little bit about the process that we went through to get to this point, and then I'll touch on a few items to close out.
Well, good afternoon. Over a year ago, we pulled together a cross-functional team from each of the divisions, as well as public safety, to actually identify how to refresh the current plan that we had. And I use the word refresh, because our intent was not to start over. Our intent was to better understand how the ease of use of that plan was for our leaders in order to make budget requests, and also for employees to understand what was their role in actually helping us achieve those goals and objectives. So the team held discussions with department directors at a retreat last August to hear how they are actually using the plan in their daily operations in each department, as well as how they are creating budget requests related to that. The team also benchmarked-
Item D, Blueprint Chesterfield Update. Mr. Harris and Mr. Bruni.
Mr. Chair, this is, this will be a brief work session joined by our Chief Learning Officer, Kevin Bruni. And really circling back to your board retreat that you had earlier this year, I give you a little update on our Blueprint Chesterfield, which, you know, in simpler terms is the county strategic plan. We are in front of you in July because this is, you know, our start of our new year from a fiscal perspective, and that's when the new plan goes into place. So just want to highlight a few things for you. I'm going to let Mr. Bruni open to kind of talk a little bit about the process that we went through to get to this point. And then I'll touch on a few items to close out.
Well, good afternoon. Over a year ago, we pulled together a cross-functional team from each of the divisions as well as public safety to actually identify how to refresh the current plan that we had. And I use the word refresh because our intent was not to start over. Our intent was to better understand how the ease of use of that plan was for our leaders in order to make budget requests and also for employees to understand what was their role in actually helping us achieve those goals and objectives. So the team held discussions with department directors at a retreat last August to hear how they are actually using the plan in their daily operations in each department as well as how they are creating budget requests related to that. The team also benchmarked other localities across the U.S. as to what did others' plans look like, what was the templates that they used. And we received the idea of what you have before you, the template, that will give us a way to connect annual priorities to the really long-term goals that you see on that plan. Following those conversations, the group got back together and actually went through and reviewed the goals and objectives, specifically the words, to make sure we understood and employees understood what those words meant. So our intent was, and our outcome really was, we sharpened the words, but we really didn't change the focus of the goals and the objectives. So we wanted to enhance the understanding for employees. So what you see before you is that revised or refreshed plan. The template you see also has two new areas. One is the intended results and outcome column as well as the priorities and initiatives. And Matt's going to speak to those more.
Yes, so I think, just to tack on to what Kevin said, when we talk to our departments and employees, I mean, I think they, everyone understands the, you have two pieces of paper in front of you. One is sort of the overarching strategic plan guideline, then the other one is the matrix that Kevin spoke to. So, you know, we've had that base strategic plan for many years and it's served us well. But the feedback that we got was being able to connect that to sort of the everyday mission, you know, that a department and employee, a business unit might have. So trying to strengthen those connections and then also, you know, adding back in that measurement component. So the sheet that reads, you know, from like a portrait perspective, that's, and some feedback that really goes back to retreats ago, we met with the board and, you know, they wanted to see some pictures come to life and sort of breathe some more, you know, energy into the documents. These will start to go up around the campus. These were taken by Mr. Gormus over there in the corner who's trying to hide, but did a fantastic job adding those visual elements to the plans. We think that will help with the storytelling. So again, but those are our tent poles. Those are the things that make us a great organization, things we focus on every single day. But we tried to bridge that gap from coming in every day and what's in your inbox and, you know, sort of those day-to-day elements. So that's where the matrix comes in. And Dr. Casey has, you know, since his arrival, has developed the priorities letter. It's really fantastic, but it's really kind of, again, more of those day-to-day action elements, action steps of the strategic plan. So what we've done here is sort of combine all of that together. So next month, you should see from him his priorities letter, and then we will be able to go back and take those fresh priorities for fiscal year '25, and a lot of them stretch beyond that, and populate them with the individual goals that you see here in front of you. Those won't change. And then we have a measures team that will continue to work for and make sure that not only we know our goals are, we know how we're going to achieve them, you know, really through priorities and other avenues, but then are we, were those the right priorities? Did they move the goals? Did they have the intended outcome that we expected? So really trying to bring the measurement component back into the strategic plan. So overall, you know, in terms of the goals itself, like I said, it is a bit of a refresh, a sharpening, trying to make sure that the words are precise. You know, we heard emphasis from you guys on partnerships and those types of things. We really have tried to go back in, even since your most recent retreat, and refine the language so that it's very clear. But again, really focusing this round on strengthening it across this matrix so that it has that day-to-day application when folks come in. And it's not just sort of that abstract plan that hangs on the wall, which, you know, people can recite, but we want to make sure that they understand how it's put into motion. And I think that's really the message here for you today. So nothing to do necessarily with it. It's not on your consent agenda, but this is, you know, the plan that's in place now. Like I said, we are starting to hang these all around the complex. And we have Mr. Bruni, his shop is responsible for sort of the implementation, and there's workshops and classes and things that go along with that. But it'll also be embedded into our upcoming budget process, which is not too far away. So that's, that's the reason we're here in front of you today. But happy to take any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you. Supervisors, any questions or comments in this regard?
Thank you very much.
Okay. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
How are we doing in the area of transparency? What's the comments from our community or any feedback in those particular areas? I know trust is important, but transparency, how are we doing in that area?
No, I think that's, you certainly will see emphasis on transparency as part of the strategic plan and trying to figure out measures now. I think that's where the measures team is. It's one thing to say it, but how do you actually go through and figure out how you're doing on that front? So that's, that's a task that's before the group to try to figure out how to, you know, operationalize that.
Good. Dr. Casey.
Just from a technological standpoint, because transparency is about information and what we have and what people can see. And so you will see later tonight, our IST Director, Chief Information Officer, Scott Furman, will espouse the NACO awards that we received for our digital counties, as well as two dot-com awards, all with the abilities of us to share information out and make it accessible. And I would like to note that, you know, we don't have to have a FOIA request to answer a question. So, you know, I always tell every new employee, if someone's asking what two plus two is, it's four. It's not a form, it's not five days. If we have the information, we do respond to it. So even quote-unquote FOIA requests, while we still get many of them, it's not, it doesn't have to be as high if we can give the answer right there on the phone or in person.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
E, Consent Agenda Highlights. Mr. Harris.
Yeah, so got a number of items for you on your consent agenda highlights. The first one, it's already been touched on. Mr. Luther walked through it. Mr. Solomon, I know it's near and dear to your heart, you do have on your consent item tonight, the award of the construction contract for Cogbo Park, $3.3 million. You've already seen all the amenities, I won't repeat that, but that is an ARPA project and is important to get that going with some of the deadlines that's coming up. But that is on your consent agenda tonight. The resolution that will enable the treasurer to have some leniency with omitted taxes that Ms. Spillman and her team got through the General Assembly, the most recent session. This is essentially when there's been an error on our side so that we give her the flexibility that she needs to have that leniency if we have made the error in the billing to be able to develop a payment plan or whatever it might be. So the resolution that goes in tonight gives her that authority. Again, that doesn't happen very often, but, you know, we have had instances that over time and just make sure that we can be as fair as possible with any citizen that might find themselves in that situation. A couple of transportation items of note. You have setting a public hearing for next month to appropriate $43 million of state and federal money for 16, across 16 different transportation projects. So Mr. Smith and his team continue to go out there and look for those opportunities. It's in excess of your 1%, so it trickles a public hearing like you're having a public hearing tonight that we set last month, same kind of deal. But that represents a really strong investment in our transportation network. And again, those are all outside dollars, so that's a very exciting piece. The Powite project is the largest component of that from a dollar and cents perspective. Also, on the transportation front, you have a, again, no appropriation, but endorsement of your smart scale projects. Also on your list, 17 projects. The largest one there from a dollar's perspective is 95 and 10 Phase 2. So this is just authorizing, enabling transportation staff to pursue those opportunities, but the board gives the endorsement of that slate. And I think you've had, you've all had briefings on that particular item. You have $320,000 grant for the sheriff to continue mental health supports in the jail. That's in excess of the authority that's vested with the county administrator to accept and appropriate a grant. But, you know, everyone's aware what Sheriff Leonard's done on the mental health front inside the jail, and this just allows him to continue to do that with some outside grant funding. And last but not least, you have the appropriation of a resolution that will authorize Mr. Minx and his group to join and pursue another piece of the opioid settlement, this time with Kroger, the grocery store chain. So that's opening up. You've had these kinds of opportunities and endorsements before, but it allows him to become part of those suits as they form. You know, whatever the resolution of that is, we'll certainly keep you up to date, but we have to get your endorsement, your stamp of approval to be part of that suit. So that's also on your consent agenda. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions? Okay. Period nine. Madam Clerk.
Item six, 15-minute citizen comment period on unscheduled matters. Mr. Chair, we did have one speaker signed up, but I do not believe she is here.
Madam Clerk, did you miss item five?
I did, yes, sir. I apologize. Item five, reports.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding our reports, supervisors? Okay. Here are none of those reports are approved as presented. Thank you.
Next item, item six. Yes, sir.
I do not believe she's here.
Dr. Worsley just went out there.
Very good.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
We'll check. Thank you.
Yeah, he just, they just, they check.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Seven, closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A5 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. One, to discuss or consider prospective businesses or industries or the expansion of existing businesses or industries where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries' interest in locating or expanding their facilities in the community. Two, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, to discuss the acquisition by the county of real estate for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body. And three, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29, to discuss the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. We need a motion to go into closed session.
It's been moving properly second. Others in favor, sign a v. As have, we are in closed session. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the evening session of the July 24th Board Supervisors Meeting. I have verified that all board members have received copies of the comments posted to the online comments board for consideration on the matters before us tonight. These comments are part of the public record and will be attached to the meeting minutes. In addition, for those citizens who are here on the zoning portion of the evening, we have two updates. First, the District Supervisor for Case 23SN087, Meadowville Road, rezoning, has requested a deferral to the Board's September 25th meeting. Secondly, rezoning requests for a deferral to that meeting. Secondly, the applicant for Case 23SN0127, First Lane Swim School, has withdrawn their case. At this time, Mr. Carroll will render the invocation. Mr. Carroll.
As Bower heads, Heavenly Father, ask for your guidance this evening as we continue to serve our community. I pray that you give us the wisdom and knowledge to make the best decisions for our community. I pray you keep watch over the family and friends of Jeff Compton, who passed away recently. Jeff works for the community as a planning and construction inspector and will be missed. I also pray you keep watch over the families and friends of the Honorable Retired Judge William Shelton. Judge Shelton served our community in a long and distinguished legal career, served in the Army, in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, the clerk of the court, and as a judge in the general district and circuit courts. I pray for our people and our country, Father, as we head into another election season. I pray for the unity and peace for our country. I pray for all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. In addition, I want to add, Father Andrew McEnheimer Fambra, who served on our airport advisory board, comfort he, his family, Father. Amen. Madam Clerk.
We would like to call forward Eagle Scout Austin Benjamin Jones to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate you.
Item 11, County Administration Update. Dr. Casey.
Good evening, members of the board and the public that's here and the public that is watching at home. Just a footnote for those that are watching at home, the audio is not at the highest quality it could be. There were many lightning strikes on our county complex last night that has thrown some of the equipment awry, but I know our IST team is working on it. But having said that, everything that was done at the two o'clock work session and tonight is recorded with audio and of the highest quality. It will be available for the public to see thereafter, just not necessarily in the same quality live. With that said, I just have about a few updates. I'd like to introduce Darcy Carroll, and if she could also bring Whitney Curtis up to the podium. Darcy Carroll has been a friend of Chesterfield County and a friend of myself for many, many years. My son was a volleyball player, and so the only time as a father-son, I actually was on his same sports team. We didn't do well and he blamed me, so that was the only year we played together. But having said that, one of the things that we had done in Chesterfield County soon after I got here was work a partnership out with RVC and the Stonebridge revitalization, now in essence anchored by an RVC lease, if you will. It's a win-win with our Parks and Rec Department and a model of a public-private partnership. It is Darcy, though, who is leaving us today as the Executive Director of RVC after all those years and growing the organization, doubling, tripling, and many other accolades as far as the volume of serving many of the youth in the community, many outreach programs and partnerships with Parks and Rec, our Police Activities League, and Special Olympics and many more. So I just wanted, in her last duty, if you will, of being the RVC Executive Director, just to have her come before you. It's been like a silent partner. We haven't necessarily had you do updates, but just as important, the passing of the torch to somebody else who is a good friend of Chesterfield County and the youth community. Ms. Carroll.
Thank you, Dr. Casey. It has been such a pleasure working with the county. And I had the pleasure of Dr. Casey and Mr. Hart and a couple others taking me to lunch not too long ago. And I told them there and I said, you guys made me look good. You really did. You helped. I mean, the Stonebridge is a fantastic facility and has enabled us to do so much for many youth in our community. And the programs that we run there enable us to do the things we do. You know, youth sports, I think everybody knows what good things youth sports can do, not just for the physical, but the mental health of our youth and how important it is. And we're, with partnerships like this, we're able to not just do the fee-driven programs that we do. We are a nonprofit, and so with support like this, we're also able to do outreach where we offer a lot of programs at no cost for children who can't afford it. And last year, we reached nearly 2,900 youth through those programs, many of them Chesterfield County youth. And that was largely due to the facility at Stonebridge. So we're very grateful and very thankful for that. And I am very happy to introduce Whitney Curtis as my successor. My last day is next Wednesday, so a week from today. And then I'll pass the torch. So thank you again.
Well, I look forward to continuing the partnership, too. We're very thankful for Chesterfield County and that facility, and we look forward to expanding our programming and expanding with the Chesterfield residents and bringing more folks into Chesterfield as well through our programming run there. So looking forward to it and thank you, guys. And we're always a partner and a resource, so everything we can do as well, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the party.
If I could have now actually Ms. Hart and Mr. Mullin come up from our Sports Visitation and Entertainment Department. You know, they have some exciting updates as they always have as they bring the experience of Chesterfield to you, but actually to 380,000-plus people each and every day. So they have a multitude of nice things to share with you. Mr. Mullin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Casey. We're excited to be here tonight on behalf of the Sports Visitation and Entertainment Sports are in full swing, from softball tournaments at the Diamonds at Ironbridge to soccer showcases at River City Sports Flex. We are hosting events nearly every weekend here in Chesterfield County. From Memorial Day to Labor Day, we will have hosted 56 events. And as you heard earlier today from Mr. Luther, we opened the Diamonds at Ironbridge last month. And from June to November, we will host 27 events at this facility. The success of these events are made in large part from the hard work and dedication of our Parks and Rec Department and the athletics crew that spends countless hours prepping fields for residents and visitors. prepping fields for residents and visitors. You may have seen the note from Dr. Casey last week, but I recently had the opportunity to speak with headman soccer coach for Randolph-Macon College. Josh is a resident of Chesterfield County, and for him, River City is where he takes his kids for different team practices, it's where he works out, and it's also where he recruits for Randolph-Macon. Recently, Josh offered a local Chesterfield athlete a spot on his team for next year, and that offer was made on the fields at River City Sportsplex. Even cooler, seven of the thirty-seven players on the roster at Randolph-Macon are Chesterfield graduates, so more collaboration to come with Randolph-Macon in the future. I'd like to touch, talk a little bit about two events that we had, one recently hosted and one upcoming. The Girls Academy Finals, we hosted this a few weeks ago at River City Sportsplex. It's one of the most high-profile events that we've hosted here in Chesterfield County. Not all events feature a hundred teams. This one featured thirty-two of the best soccer teams in the country. They came from fifteen different states and had a hundred and seventeen different college coaches here for recruiting, so it was a great first event that would become a great partnership with the Girls Academy. And while bringing in national events are great, it's easier for us to always partner locally and work to build events with folks that live here in the county. We're very excited to have partnered with Chesterfield Quarterback League. Can't wait for their upcoming event next August at River City Sportsplex. Can't wait to see where this event grows. We have some more details forthcoming as we receive more hotel reports, but for fiscal year twenty-four, we did host a hundred and sixty events, and I expect those numbers to only increase as we keep going. The inaugural Sports Hall of Fame class has been selected. This was a very fun initiative that our department got to work on. Community engagement through sports can be so impactful, and that's why this was created. In one year, in year one, we received over forty nominations for the inaugural class, and the committee voted to induct ten this year, as there was too many amazing and deserving nominees to keep this class limited to a certain size. The banquet will be held on September twelfth at the Perkins Center for the Arts, and you can visit our website for ticket and event information. And with that, I will pass the mic over to our creative marketing line.
Hello.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. This past weekend, Chesterfield hosted the Bronco Eleven World Series. Eight teams came from all over the world, including Mexico, the Dominican Republic, Beijing, China, California, North Carolina, Texas, and more. Our intern, James, who you met earlier today, took the initiative to attend the opening ceremony and several of the games to get some great photos and videos for our social media channels. We're so excited that James has been part of our team this summer. He's been such an asset to our team in just a few short months. In just six days, we posted a total of thirty times across our social media platforms. This included some entertaining Instagram reels where we mic'd up some of the players to gather audio clips. They were very hysterical and entertaining. We asked them to show us some of their home run celebrations, which were equally entertaining, and conducted one-on-one interviews with some of the coaches. We received just under seventeen thousand impressions on social media, and just in case you're wondering what an impression is, it is the total number of times content is displayed on a screen. We received more than seven hundred engagements, such as likes, comments, and shares, and just under ten thousand video views. And the team that won Placentia, California, congratulations to them. They had an undefeated record of four and oh. One thing our department strives to do is to bring a quality of life to residents and engage the community in fun and exciting ways. One of these community engagement initiatives is the Chesterfield Summer Bingo Board. We partnered with local influencer Lindsay with RVA Family Fun to launch the Bingo Board to give residents a chance to explore and experience Chesterfield in ways they maybe have never before. The idea is that when someone completes five activities, vertical, horizontal, or diagonal, they will win a few Experience Chesterfield branded prizes like stickers, sunglasses, and temporary tattoos, which we placed at all of your seats prior to the meeting tonight. If you want to put on your sunglasses, you can show everyone. They look great. I love it. They can go with your polos and.
This is my favorite color, Chesterfield green.
They look great on you. Love it. Thank you. If anyone completes the entire Bingo Board, which is twenty-five squares, their name will go in a hat for a drawing of a grand prize. On August fifteenth, ten names will be drawn to win the grand prize, which consists of some really great prizes like these and other Experience Chesterfield stuff like a cooler and gift cards from local businesses in the area. So far, we've had several families complete the five activities, and we've hand-delivered prizes to each of the families. We also have had a handful of families who've completed the entire Bingo Board and are anxiously awaiting the drawing on August fifteenth. I wanted to share two quotes that I got from two separate parents who've completed the Bingo Board. One mom who completed the Bingo Board with her son said, "My son and I completed the entire Bingo Board. He's so excited that he insists I email you before we even leave the park. Thank you so much. This has been really fun." And the second is a quote from a mom who completed the Bingo Board with her daughter. She said, "Thank you so much for putting this together. We had a really great time. My daughter told me that even if we don't win the grand prize, she will still be happy because she had so much fun with me." These two quotes truly showcase that if we continue to find creative ways to engage our community, we're providing them with a great quality of life and, in this case, an opportunity to create lasting memories with their loved ones right here in Chesterfield. We can't thank Lindsay with RVA Family Fun enough for bringing this idea to us and partnering with us on this great initiative. Speaking of fun, exciting ways to engage the community, you may be aware that we did a public vote for a county mascot. Well, the votes are in. In total, we received three thousand twelve votes, and the winner is, did you run a poll, anyone? Thank you. Cole the Raccoon. The raccoon came. The raccoon came in with thirty-four percent of the votes. It actually was a really close race. The raccoon came in with thirty-four percent of the votes. The retriever came in with second with twenty-seven percent of the votes. The chipmunk placed third with twenty-six percent of the votes, and the bear came in last with thirteen percent of the votes. So it truly was a very close race. And thank you to Chris Coleman and IST, who pulled a really fun statistic for us. Ninety-four percent of the people who voted for Cole the Raccoon had IP addresses based right here in Chesterfield County. In total, we received about twenty-eight thousand impressions on social media, and that number is continuing to grow due to additional media coverage since we have now announced the winning mascot. Next steps, we have commissioned two local artists, Ross Trimmer and Michael Broth, who you may know as the artist who created the Midlothian mural at Winterfield Crossing. These two local artists are currently designing the mascot, and we will share the final design in the coming weeks, so please stay tuned. Thank you to each and every one of you, Dr. Casey and other county leaders, for your continuous support of our department. We truly love what we do, and we love to showcase Chesterfield as a great place to live, work, play, and stay. We appreciate you allowing us to come speak this evening, and if you have any comments or questions, please let us know.
Any comments or questions, supervisors?
Mr. Engel. I'd just like to share, I know we had received some comments out there on Facebook about why are we spending money on this. The total cost of the mascot decision was only about two thousand dollars. That was the commissioning of the drawing, and that's being paid for with heads and beds money that we could not use for any other opportunities in the county and the budget. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that this was fun. It's good. I'm glad that we did it, but it was not a cost that the citizens are really bearing.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. That's one cool raccoon.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just had to comment on that raccoon. He's cool. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have Scott Furman, our Chief Information Officer, try, come up here and try and follow that, but he does have some good, he does have some great news to report of Chesterfield being recognized in two different ways and two different national or international recognitions. One is a dot com gold award, and the other one is the Digital Counties Survey Award, both top honors, but he knows far more about it, and I turn it over to him.
Thank you, Dr. Casey, Chair Holland, board members. As Dr. Casey mentioned, I'm thrilled to share with you the fact that Chesterfield County is again being recognized for outstanding digital achievements by the Center of Digital Government. We have been awarded the top spot, the number one ranking in our demographic category for twenty-twenty-four for the Digital County Survey. This award commends counties embracing innovative technologies, data governance, cybersecurity, and for advancing accessibility and equity efforts for more responsive and effective government. Some statistics, just for some background, these awards have been in place for about twenty-two years now. The Center for Digital Government has partnered with the National Association of Counties to identify best practices in the application of technology across the three thousand-plus counties in the United States. For fifteen consecutive years, Chesterfield County has been ranked in the top ten nationally. This year marks our fifth time as being ranked number one since twenty-ten. In fact, we've consistently placed in the top five for the past nine years, kind of demonstrating our unwavering commitment to delivering service excellence to the constituents of Chesterfield County. As Dr. Casey also mentioned, in addition to the Digital County Survey, we've also been recognized by the dot com awards, which is an international competition administered by the Association of Marketing and Communications Professionals, which honors excellence web creativity and digital communications. For these awards, Chesterfield received gold medal accolades in the government website category and in the website redesign category. And as you know, we just launched a brand-new website, so to have that already being recognized is outstanding. So the Digital County Survey and the dot com awards are a testament to the hard work, the passion and innovative spirit of our partners across all county departments. This is more than just an IT set of recognition. It really has had a lot of involvement across departments. But there's been a significant effort and a number of contributions from the county's information systems technology team, their collective dedication and tireless efforts to provide excellence and service to Chesterfield have made these achievements possible. In fact, I think there's a number of members of that team here with us tonight.
Please have them stand as well, Scott, if you would, that team.
IST members?
IST, we want to recognize you for your outstanding contribution.
So in closing, I just want to express my deep gratitude to the Board of Supervisors and of course county administration for your continued support. These awards are not just a recognition of recent achievements, but a motivation to keep pushing the boundaries of what's possible for digital government. Moving forward together, we will continue to leverage technology to enhance the lives of our residents and to create a more connected and inclusive Chesterfield County. So thank you.
Thank you so, I want to comment. Thank you so very much. It was an honor for us to be in Tampa to receive this award for the population size of our county, our three thousand sixty-nine counties in the nation. We were ranked number one. We were honored to represent you, the board members, as you can see displayed there, honored to represent you and the outstanding work you do and have done. So thank you for joining us there as well, Scott, for being there, and thank you all for your outstanding work. And this is an estimation of excellence, estimation of excellence, and that's what we pursue. So thank you so very much for all your work, for all you do, and everyone in the department, including you, thank you again for everyone who contributes to this cause. Thank you.
Thank you.
And board members?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to kind of put a fine point on this. When we're at this award ceremony, in our particular category, they start in tenth place, and they work their way up. And for those counties that are in tenth place, they're so excited that they got tenth place because it's so competitive. So to be tenth, and then ninth, and then eighth, and to count down to the number one in the, in the country, in our size county, it's quite an accomplishment. It's something that should give us all just a sense of pride, because this is a nationwide kind of accolade, but it doesn't come with an enormous, it comes with an enormous amount of work and creativity and leadership. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. I just had three other items I can cover myself. One is just, and we will continue to do this at each meeting, is the police chief hiring process. The Police Chief Recommendation Committee will be getting together in August. As we've said before, the application process ends July twenty-ninth, as well as the community survey that's out there July twenty-ninth, and the Police Department Employee Survey July twenty-ninth. We have finished all community meetings, all police department meetings in person and virtual, and again, our goal as a committee is to then present to the Board of Supervisors, ideally in the month of September, the list of candidates for them to start their process for consideration. The second item I have is just a news of just showing the attraction that Chesterfield County is for a variety of people. The IRS does rankings, and we have the highest ranking in the state of Virginia for increase in adjusted gross income, over two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in adjusted gross income. That's great for the state. For those that know how government works, the state gets the income tax. We just get to be able to say this at a board meeting. But having said that, you know, represented over two thousand, about two thousand two hundred filers, so it's about a hundred thousand dollars more per return, which again shows you the value of the people who are coming in here and what they're doing. Just as important, the average new household size that has come into Chesterfield County is two-point-three, which is lowering our overall county average of two-point-seven, which shows that the county is attracting empty nesters, retirees, and those that may be starting their careers with little to no children. The reason cited during this study was the excellent schools, safe neighborhoods, recreational amenities, low local taxes, and the quality of public services as reasons for them to move them, themselves, and possibly their businesses to the county. The, in conjunction with that, everyone may be aware that the state of Virginia has won CNBC's a number one ranking for twenty-twenty-four. It's the sixth time that they've had this ranking at number one since the survey started in two thousand and seven, but as relative to Chesterfield County, in all the press release announcements of why the state of Virginia was number one, Chesterfield was cited, and in example projects, the Laco Manufacturing Project was cited as a reason of state of Virginia for being the most business-friendly state. Again, a lot of quality of life factors besides economy went into that. Last but not least, the value of the county's triple-triple-A bond rating was on display again recently as the county issued general obligation bonds from the twenty-twenty-two bond referendum, little over ninety million dollars. Two-thirds of it is going to school projects that have been defined in the referendum and your budget processes. They're the third for county projects, and notably, the interest rate on those bonds was a very, very low three-point-four percent, which saves the taxpayers of Chesterfield County tremendous amounts of monies and frees up our monies to then either, again, drive down the costs to citizens living here and/or to invest in other capital or programs on behalf of the citizens. That concludes my remarks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Casey. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item twelve, board member reports.
Board member reports. Who's first?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Engel.
On June fourteenth, Mr. Holland and Ms. Snyder and I had the pleasure of attending the Juneteenth pop-up night vendor market at the Perkins Center for the Arts. It was a night filled with entertainment, vendor marketplace, shopping, art, food trucks, and it was an enjoyable time for all to get to know some of the black-owned businesses in the Chesterfield County area, and I took home a lot of delicious edibles that I was able to purchase there. My family enjoyed a lot of snacks that night. It was, it was good. On July ninth, Ms. Snyder and I were able to attend El Libertaza, which is the big book party that was held by Chesterfield County Schools at the fairgrounds. The event was for children of all ages, and they were able to pick five books at their reading level in their language. So it was an awesome event. In addition to the books, there was food, music, kid-friendly games, an obstacle course, inflatables, and crafts led by the Children's Museum of Richmond. It was a warm, heartwarming day to see all the children's enthusiasm that day about learning, so. It was warm, but it was also heartwarming. Then on July sixteenth, I was able to meet with some of the citizens from my district for a community conversation. It's a time where we sit down, we had, I believe, nineteen citizens. We sat down together for approximately an hour and a half and discussed whatever they had on their minds. There's no agenda to that. It's just whatever topics they ask questions on, and I believe most of them got their answers. We have a few opportunities on getting back to them on a few things that were requested, but big picture, it was a great conversation. I really enjoyed doing them. We've had, I've been able to do them at least once a year since. We've had, I've been able to do them at least once a year since '22, and hope to continue doing that at least once a year, maybe twice. The next one that I have, because, and they come in pairs, we do an afternoon and an evening session. So I still have my evening session on August 7th at the Chester Library from 6:30 to 8:00. You can go to the county website to register to attend. We do limit it to 30 people, but it's not to limit the number of people. We want to make sure everybody that attends gets an opportunity to participate. And if we have community conversations and it looks like we need to add more sessions, we will, but adding more people doesn't make sense to each session because we want everybody to be able to participate. And finally, on July 18th, I was able to tour the Health Department and Social Services Departments. I believe my colleagues, Dr. Miller and Ms. Snyder, have also had an opportunity to tour. As a member of the Social Services Board, I truly value the outreach and the support these organizations provide to ensure the most vulnerable residents have access to the best services and benefits available to them. And as a child of a public health nurse for over 32 years, going into the Health Department and taking that tour brought me back to my childhood. So I appreciated that tour a lot. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Ms. Snyder?
So on July 6th, I enjoyed participating in the Copa Talento Showcase at River City Sports Flex. This is a nonprofit organization that runs soccer clinics for underprivileged children by pro scouts for three days, followed by a tournament. Engaging with the players of all ages, we had a great time before some of the tournaments. And I did get to do the kickoff for the semifinal round for this game that I'm standing with these ladies here. No one was injured. I did not hurt anything. I kicked it in the right direction. It was all good. So yeah, this, it's just an awesome organization, and they're doing a great job of bringing accessibility to kids that couldn't afford to do, like, sports that are like traveling sports teams, so, and getting them exposed to some scouts and stuff as well. So it's awesome. So the Fourth of July celebration down at the fairgrounds was a bit damp. There was some thunder and lightning. We did get locked down to begin with. Had a great time hanging out with the sports, excuse me, the parks and recreation folks. We had lots of fun after the rain passed on. Some of my other board members, Mr. Holland and Mr. Engel, were both there. They had featured music, vendors, Kid Zones, and of course, there was the fireworks as well. So it was a great time. Hopefully, next year it'll be a little more dry. So on June 29th, I attended the memorial and portrait unveiling for firefighter and paramedic Alicia Monahan. Her death has been recognized as a line-of-duty death. Her portrait will be enshrined in the Hall of Honor, and her name will be added to the, has already been added to the memorial wall at the Eames Pittman Public Safety Training Center. May her sacrifice and the sacrifices of all who have fallen in the line of duty never be forgotten. She was actually doing what she loved and training rapid water rescue down in South, was it North Carolina or South Carolina, when she, when she actually passed, so. So upcoming, we have National Night Out. This is always an awesome time of the year, great community outreach with the police. I invite the communities to participate in this year's National Night Out. It's scheduled August 6th. Annual event encourages residents to spend time outside of their neighbor, or outside with their neighbors and police, strengthening neighborhood spirit and partnership between police and community. You can find your closest event by going to chesterfield.gov/nationalnightout. It's always great to see all the different activities and gatherings in communities and HOAs and parks that happen over this. So find yours and participate, and have a great evening, enjoying time with the police and your community. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the opportunity to attend a town hall meeting that was held with the United States Secretary of Agriculture, Tom Ilsec, down at Virginia State University Multipurpose Building, where it was presented to the community about the efforts the USDA has incorporated to boost income for producers and consumers through the expansion of markets, infrastructure, and local supply chains. It was a great learning experience, and it was good for the farmers and the people in the community who attended. It was well-attended, to learn about actually some programs that are available through the USDA that they didn't know about. So it was, it was nice that that event was held down there. Next. I had an opportunity to, we used to have, it used to be called the Baptist Children's Home on Hickory Road. It's now the Baptist Center of Virginia. I was asked to attend and speak on the 77th Founder's Day Celebration that they held. The Center empowers underserved K through 12 in college students by promoting education through environmental learning. They're currently trying to partner with Virginia State University, help them with the overcrowding they actually have, because Virginia State University's had, over the last two years, a substantial increase in freshman class enrollment, which has had led to them to having a problem with student housing. And so they're going to be working with them to help provide housing for students, initially 30, 30 students. So it was a great event to attend and a great fundraiser, and we look forward to working with them and Virginia State University. I think this will be a topic of discussion in our next town and gown to see if we can help them facilitate this. Next. I think, well, this was great, and this is one of the events we always get to go to every year. The sheriff does an absolutely fantastic job. You know, we attended the Summer Camp Awards that was held at Pocahontas State Park. You know, the Free Law themed Summer Day Camp offers 60 Chesterfield County middle school participants opportunity to learn more about Virginia laws and interact with deputies, fostering a positive environment with the law enforcement in the community. Most of it's funded through donations from the community. The staff that you see there are sheriff's deputies, and most of them donate their time, actually all of them donate their time to actually be there with the kids for the whole week. It's, it's just an absolute, it's an honor to be there, but really the enthusiasm by the children, just amazing. And last but not least, Jessica and I had the opportunity to attend the Bronco XI World Series as it returned this year at the Harry G. Daniel Park. I, along with several other people from the community, we had the opportunity to throw out a first pitch. Unfortunately, didn't throw a strike, threw a little too high. The young, the little guy jumped up as high as he could to catch it, but I apologized. But nevertheless, it was a great event that was held there, and a lot of teams from, from all of them that were in attendance, as they spoke about early in the work session. You know, it's an annual international youth baseball, 11-year-old pony baseball teams from around the world, and we had a good time. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm impressed you were able to find your glove. I think it's very cool.
I've had that glove since my dad gave it to me when I was 13. I will not lose that glove.
Not lose that glove. Glove means something. I wanted to go back initially to something that Dr. Casey said. I want to go off script for a second. You were talking about the AAA bond rating, and I mean, one of the things, I mean, maybe it's just my theme for this evening, is how lucky we are to live in such a vibrant county and in such a healthy county. When we were in NACO and being, and hanging out with other folks from 3,000 other counties, and hearing the challenges, the issues that they're working with, that we're not wrestling with, is just, it's so humbling, and it provides an opportunity for context for all of us. And so I just was thinking about how, here we are in our 275th year, and celebrating 275 years, and how healthy we really are. And so it's just incredibly exciting. So I wanted to start out by saying that. I had the honor to celebrate, to go into 35th anniversary of the Japan-Virginia Society at the Virginia Museum of Arts. Mr. Holland wasn't able to attend, so it provided an opportunity for me and my wife. We were able to have a date night and go out that evening, and also to spend and meet the ambassador to the United States, Shigae Yamato. So that was quite an honor to do that. The society was founded in 1988 in a foster's international cooperation, cultural exchange, and trade between Virginia and Japan. This nonprofit educational organization is backed by diverse membership. I also was able to tour the Samurai exhibit. We were able to do that. It just was an incredibly memorable experience and incredibly powerful to tour that exhibit. I was able to, I enjoyed connecting with local businesses. I love doing this every month, and I really like highlighting one of the businesses. This was one that Midlothian Business Alliance had a monthly meeting at Funktastic Means and Beer. I'm always interested in hearing from both new and experienced business owners on the challenges of affecting the Midlothian area and coordinating efforts to build a community for people to live, work, play. Makes me proud to just be seeing the progress that we're all making. And I need to be honest with you, when I hear Funktastic Means, I don't, didn't know what that was. I'm kind of embarrassed to say that. But what we're talking about is fermenting honey. It's a wonderful drink, and, and something I highly recommend coming by there and seeing it. They've really turned it into an art. And even though it's a fermented honey, they're able to make it not just sweet, but they can make it semi-sweet, they can make it dry. So definitely go by there. They're on al-verseur, and I would just highly recommend, just so welcoming, that evening. And I have upcoming two community conversations, one on August 8th from 2:00 to 2:30 at the library, Midloth Library, and then August 14th from 6:00 to 7:30. This is one of my favorite things to do, because I always leave there with a lot of extra homework, because not always questions do I know the answer to. So I get to, it's like, okay, I can get back to y'all once you have need. Some answers I actually will know, and I don't like making up. So if I know that, I love going there. So I'm really looking forward to the upcoming community conversations. I know that there's a limit to how many people can go. I think it's 30, and I don't know where we stand on that, but it's, I'm really looking forward to it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Certainly, as you can see, we've been all over the county, participating and joining in a lot of the events. I had a great pleasure on June 28th to speak to the sheriff's 39th Basic Academy Graduation Ceremony and to greet our newest deputies. And I have to say that this was a very moving program. The speaker actually, as you may recall, actually broke down in tears as she was giving her speech on behalf of the class. It was just that moving. So it's always a pleasure, and I'm going to congratulate them on graduating and joining the sheriff's team. So great job, as you can see there in that slide. Next slide. Now, this is really exciting, because look at graduation class 68, and all the new graduates from our Fire and MES Department. Had the pleasure to speak to them as well. And now you can also see in that slide there, their helmets, they are assigned, their site, location during graduation. What an exciting opportunity for them, and it adds to the team, outstanding team of our Fire Department, and certainly helps the chief as he continues to grow the department and make a difference. So I want to applaud you all for that, and congratulations to them, and all the best in their careers. Next slide. And as was noted earlier by our Chief Information Officer, Mr. Furman, we all attended NACO Conference and attended a number of programs, workshops, and activities. And this is a wonderful event, because we get a chance to see how fortunate, as mentioned earlier, how blessed we are as a county. You get to listen to what's going on throughout the country, and you get to say to yourself, we don't have that issue. We don't have that problem. We just have a wonderful county that continues to pursue excellence, as we've noted. And of course, this recognizes certainly the award as mentioned earlier, and we came in, as noted, number one in our category. And of course, we had the pleasure of giving remarks. Not everyone gets that opportunity, and I had the pleasure to give remarks on behalf of the board that evening when we was there at that event. So I'm incredibly proud of all the winners and all they're representing, and all the good things they do. And of course, in addition to that, that conference with all the counties, I would like to also report that a school, a back-to-school BASH event will be held on Saturday, August 17th, from 10:00 to 11:00, at the new Bueller Recreation Center on Hopkins Road. So we're excited about the work that they are doing, and that's being sponsored by Ms. Erica Bynum of the Chesterfield Parks and Rec. And of course, what else do I have here? And of course, I want to mention also that the Chesterfield Fair is coming, 113 Chesterfield Fair on August 23rd is coming. So get ready, get ready for that great food and activity and fun. And I believe that concludes my report. Does it not? More slides. I think that concludes my report. Also, I want to recognize a former distinguished supervisor of Chesterfield County. I'm going to have him stand. The honorable coin, Mr. Sonny Kern. Mr. Kern, would you stand, sir, and be recognized? He's served many years here in Chesterfield County, and he still looks great, doesn't he? It still looks great. So, Mr. Sonny Kern.
Thanks for being this nice. Good to see you. And Madam Clerk, that concludes my report.
I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, that concludes my report. Next item.
Item 13, Resolutions and Special Recognitions. A, Resolution Recognizing Boy Scout Upon Attaining Rank of Eagle Scout. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, fellow board members. At this time, I'd like to ask that Austin Benjamin Jones and his family come forward and please join the board on stage.
Family, please come forward right here.
As you know, we take great pride in recognizing young people who are making tremendous contributions within the community and therefore to Chesterfield County. So thus, we are very proud to bring him forward and recognize him for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Congratulations.
Thank you, David. Madam Clerk, would you read the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is a special patch for you.
Whereas the Boy Scouts of America was incorporated by Mr. William D. Boyce on February 8th, 1910, and was chartered by Congress in 1916. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America was founded to build character, provide citizenship training, and promote physical fitness. And whereas, after earning at least 21 merit badges in a wide variety of skills, including leadership, service, and outdoor life, serving in a leadership position in a troop, carrying out a service project beneficial to their community, being active in the troop, demonstrating scout spirit, and living up to the scout oath and law, Mr. Austin Benjamin Jones of Troop 2806, sponsored by Bethiah United Methodist Church, has accomplished those high standards of commitment and has reached the long-sought goal of Eagle Scout, which is received by only 4% of those individuals entering the scouting movement. And whereas, growing through his experiences in scouting, learning the lessons of responsible citizenship, and endeavoring to prepare himself for a role as a leader in society, Austin has distinguished himself as a member of a new generation of prepared young citizens, of whom we can all be very proud. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Chesterfield County Board of Supervisors, this 24th day of July 2024, publicly recognizes Mr. Austin Benjamin Jones, extends congratulations on his attainment of Eagle Scout, and acknowledges the good fortune of the county to have such an outstanding young man as its citizen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion? Been moved improperly, second, all those in favor, say a "a". I say it, it's approved. Austin?
Yes.
Congratulations first and foremost to you and your family, only 4%, so you're in an elite class of Eagle Scout. So we certainly want to give you an opportunity to introduce your family, talk about, make sure you talk about that project, because we have to figure out what you are doing there. So make sure you share that for us, Austin, so we can be as informed as you are. And then anything else you would like to share, and certainly introduce your family as well. Austin, I'll hold this for you, as you are free now to speak, Austin.
So first of all, I'd like to honor and recognize my father and my mother for quite this long journey. It starts early, and for me, anyway, it ended late, but I'm glad that I was able to accomplish this. My pr- My project was environmentally focused, one as well as a community service-based one locally in my neighborhood where we put plaques, no-dumping plaques across the storm drains all across my neighborhood. And that took, involved a lot of, most of my troop members, and I'm very grateful for that opportunity to be able to do something like that for my community, and I'm very grateful for the recognition. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Let's give them a hand, first of all. Thank you, Austin.[634.54][634.54](applause) This is quite special. This is the first time I've seen that type project, so you are certainly a leader in that regard. So we congratulate you and your family on the outstanding work you've done and on your pursuits. So what grade are you in? And tell us some about your grade school and what have you.
At the time, while I was doing this project, I was a senior at Cosby High School.
Okay.
Right now, I am a sophomore at Old Dominion University in Norfolk. And a lot of my scout experience had coincided, integrate with my high school education, getting that to flow smoothly and all the scheduling. It's something that not many consider or think about, but it's something that's very important to balance the scouting and schooling.
Thank you. Thank you, Austin. Again, congratulations. Here is your plaque.
Thank you.
And here's a special, and here's a special plaque that only you can get here at the Chesterfield County Board of Supervisors, and a pin that you get that is unique too from the Chesterfield County Board of Supervisors. Congratulations and all the best in your endeavors.
Deeply honored.
Thank you. All right. For being here, congratulations. Congratulations. Very proud. Very proud. Congratulations. Very proud.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Thank you. Thanks, ma'am. Thank you.
Again, thank you all for being here. Next item, please.
B, Resolution Recognizing Russell T. Anthony Evans, Jr., Environmental Engineering Department Upon His Passing. Mr. Smedley.
So good to see you. So good to see you. So good to see you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for being here. Mr. Smedley, sir.
So Russell Evans went by Anthony, and over the years that I knew him, he had a very joyful soul. Every time he would walk up to me, he would have that smile on his face, and he would bring a smile to my face. He brought happiness to everybody around him, and I will miss seeing him, and I know his coworkers will miss seeing him also and working with him. Mr. Duffy, say a few words.
Thank you.
Since I knew Anthony, I guess, the longest, I'm going to elaborate a little bit about him. He was the first hire I made in the department in 1996. He came on board as a humble, eager to learn and quickly establish himself as a reliable, hard-working employee. Over time, he became more experienced. He was promoted to lead maintenance worker, and he always was reliable and assumed the more responsibility. He actually worked on the road history behind your house a few years ago. He was one of that.
I remember. Thank you.
Anyway, Anthony was, as he worked his career, he started showing what a generous person he was. He was remarkably mechanically inclined, so he would hesitate to assist other employees in working on their cars after hours on his time. He could fix anything, brakes, transmissions, ignitions. He was very good at that. He also had a small lawn care business on the side, and he would, he would help elderly people in his neighborhood. He would ask a lot of it for free. He was just a generous, kind, a hard-working man. He was probably the most well-liked employee I ever had. Everybody in the department loved Anthony. Over the years, he helped foster a family-type culture within the department. He was always checking on other employees and making sure they were okay. Every Father's Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas, I would get a text from Anthony, and he would always say, Merry Christmas, buddy. Happy Father's Day, buddy. This is the first year I didn't get one. I actually texted his wife and said, I missed that. I missed it. He was just a good kid. He epitomized, I think what epitomizes his spirit the most is something he developed with habit. He would, we would occasionally go to the transfer station to deposit debris from storm to storm ditches and that kind of thing, and he would always stop. If somebody was struggling with their own load, private systems, he would make the crew help them unload their vehicle because he couldn't stand to see that. And they all do that now as part of the remembrance of him. Anyways, excuse me. He had an unconditional love for his fellow employees. He was very unselfish. We do miss him. I miss, we all miss our coworker and our friend, and thank you for recognizing him for that.
Thank you for being here. And Madam Clerk, would you read the resolution, and then we'll give you an opportunity?
Yes, sir. Whereas Mr. Russell T. Anthony Evans, Jr. started his career with the Department of Environmental Engineering on March 11th, 1996, as a maintenance worker. And whereas Mr. Evans was part of the department's storm response team in September, 1996 during Tropical Storm Fran, keeping county roads clear for first responders. And whereas Mr. Evans, through hard work and diligence, was promoted to principal maintenance worker in July 2002. And whereas Mr. Evans was part of the department response team that operated in September 2003 during Tropical Storm Isabel, working long shifts for several days to keep county roads open by removing down trees and repairing infrastructure damaged by the storm. And whereas Mr. Evans was part of the department response team that operated in 2004 during Tropical Storm Gaston, working long hours to clear flood debris and repair infrastructure damaged by the storm. And whereas Mr. Evans worked tirelessly as part of the department response team that operated in August 2011 during Tropical Storm Irene, removing down trees and storm debris and keeping county roads open for first responders. And whereas Mr. Evans always displayed a strong work ethic and was a hard-working, valued employee of the department throughout his career. And whereas Mr. Evans received numerous letters of thanks and appreciation from citizens over the course of his career for his excellent customer service, as well as from his coworkers for his assistance, support, and teamwork. And whereas Mr. Evans was a valued resource within the department who took new employees under his wing in showing them safe and efficient working practices during maintenance and upkeep of stormwater infrastructure. And whereas Mr. Evans was a member of the county's snow removal team, who worked tirelessly during inclement weather to remove snow and ice from county facilities so that they were accessible after storm events. And whereas Mr. Evans provided Chesterfield County with many years of loyal and dedicated service. And whereas Mr. Evans passed away on April 11th, 2024, after 28 years with the Chesterfield County Department of Environmental Engineering. And whereas Chesterfield County and the Board of Supervisors will miss Mr. Evans' diligent service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Chesterfield County Board of Supervisors this 24th day of July 2024 publicly recognizes Mr. Russell T. Anthony Evans, Jr., and extends on behalf of its members and the residents of Chesterfield County appreciation for his dedicated service to the county. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Evans' family members, and that this resolution be permanently recorded among the papers of this Board of Supervisors of Chesterfield County, Virginia.
Thank you. May I have a motion? Been moved and properly second. All those in favor, sign of aye. As have it. Condolences on behalf of Board of Supervisors and a grateful county for his outstanding years of service with us. He's certainly, is missed already, and our hearts go out with you. Our prayers are with you, and in comfort that we can share or do even now or in the future. Always know we are here for you, this Board of Supervisors and this grateful county. And certainly, at this point, Dr. Casey will present something that he's earned, and then, of course, you may have an opportunity to share any words you like at that point. Dr. Casey.
Thank you. First and foremost, we are so sorry for your loss. We've done so many of these retiree resolutions of a celebratory moment, and the person's here with family and friends, and it's just celebratory. We try and be respectful after some period of mourning to always still recognize those that are not here that have earned the right for what I'm about to say. And that is, what I'm going to give to you as a family is a replica of a brick with his name and years of service, many years of service. That same brick will also be displayed forevermore in front of our historic courthouse steps amongst many of his friends and peers that he's worked side by side. In addition, in addition to the resolution which was read, we have also presented you as just a token, smallest token of our appreciation, that when we lose an employee, an active employee, that we lower the county's flag, just the county's flag, to half-staff on the day of internment. Take a picture of it, that is the picture of the flag that particular day, and forevermore recognize him in our hearts and souls. So again, we are sorry for your loss, and you know, the only thing I would have said if he was here is with what you heard of all the words are, when you think about a natural disaster, hurricanes, tropical storms, snow, and you think of public safety first and foremost as being the first responders, they could not get to their place and destination of a 911 call if it was not for him. So he is part of that public safety family as well. So on behalf of Chesterfield County, deeply sorry.
And now, Madam, you may comment if you like.
It's going to be hard, but...
That's all right.
I want to first of all, thanks Chesterfield County for all the gifts you honor in Anthony's name. And to have another daughter, this is his youngest daughter, Mackenzie. Have another daughter named Monica, but she couldn't be here today. She just had a baby on July 11th. Anthony always talked good about Chesterfield County, his fellow coworkers, Mr. Duffy, all you, been very supportive. I didn't get a chance to thank everyone for the flowers and cards, but thank you all for your delicacy and honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you as well. Prayers and condolences to you and your families. You continue to go on without Anthony. God bless you. God bless you.
Round of applause.
Yeah, round of applause. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.[1321.15][1321.15](applause) Blessings to you. And this, and, and, okay. Thank you, supervisor. Thank you. Thank you. And you can go. God bless you.
Thank you.
Yeah. God bless you.
Thank you very much.
God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Item 14, New Business. A1, Approve a Performance Grant Agreement with Conair Operations LLC. Mr. Hart.
Good evening. Chairman Holland, members of the board, Dr. Casey. It is once again my pleasure to ask you to approve a grant agreement for a foreign company who has picked Chesterfield as the best site to do business in the United States. This, at this time, it is a Swiss company, Conair, who makes humidifying, commercial humidifying equipment for the laboratory and clean room industry. They were going, they purchased this beautiful building in Chesterfield. They're going to fill it with manufacturing equipment and hire 180 people to run that equipment, paying an average of $70,000 per job. We had to compete with our neighbors, as we all mostly always do, to win this project. And the state of Virginia put a, got a basic Commonwealth Opportunity Fund grant of $700,000 in order to win the program. We have to match that at the local level. We did so in this case by largely spending, going to spend the money on an improvement of Coach and Willis Road intersection, which will not only benefit Conair, but it will benefit all the other manufacturers and industries that are along Coach Road. So basically, it was a needed safety and efficiency program, so we accomplished an infrastructure service that we can use all ourselves while also incentivizing this company. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. I would like to ask you to approve the grant and appropriate the funds.
Thank you. Any questions, supervisors? Comments, rather. And if not, I would like to have a motion, if I may. It's been moved.
Second.
Properly second. Any additional discussion? There are none. All those in favor, sign of aye. As have it, so approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Great job. Outstanding. Next item.
B, Appointments. We have one appointment to the Community Policy and Management Team.
Any questions? Comments? Not, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Been moved and properly second. Any additional discussion? There are none. All those in favor, sign of aye. As have it, so approved unanimously. Thank you.
Item 14C, Consent Items. Mr. Chair, there have been no requests to remove items from the consent agenda for public comment.
Supervisor, would you like to remove an item? We'll discuss an item. There are none. May I have a motion, please? Been moved and...
Second.
Probably second. All those in favor, sign of aye. As have it, approved unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
15, 15-Minute Citizen Common Period on Unscheduled Matters. This time is designated for citizens to talk to the Board of Supervisors. It is not a time for dialogue with the board members, and it is not an answer, question-answer period. Those conversations can easily occur with individual board members outside of the board meeting. As a reminder, the board's procedures state, no citizen shall speak on any matter of business that is a subject on the board's agenda for that day, and each speaker shall have three minutes to address the board. We have five speakers. If you'll please come forward and speak in this order. Glenn Bessa, Melissa Thomas, Rachel James, Kevin Battle, and Chris Weegard.
Please come forth, Mr. Bessa. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good to see you all again.
Good to see you too.
Thank you so much. My name is Glenn Bessa. I live in the Dale District. I'm here representing friends of Chesterfield County. And let me get started here. I'm going to talk tonight about the causes and effects of climate change, but first I'm going to start out with the effects, okay? So you may have read in the paper that Sunday was the hottest day in recorded history, and the following day was the next hottest day, was even hotter. So we've just set records, and we're setting them all the time, okay? Climate change is real. It's a serious problem. This is an interesting statistic I came upon. Based on the 2022 U.S. Census Bureau of Household Pulse Survey, 47,000 Virginians, 47,000 Virginians were displaced due to natural disasters. Over 20% of them did not return to their homes within six months or later, okay? 47,000 Virginians. Those are mostly floods, but we've seen a lot of that flooding, where people's homes have been destroyed and they've had to move. 47,000 Virginians. It's happened, I'm sure it's probably even happened here in Chesterfield County. On May 31st, an Associated Press article found, stated that Texas A&amp;M researchers, okay, had done some analysis and had determined that 11,000 people in the United States had died from the overexposure to heat. 11,000 Americans, okay? I'm sure some of those were Virginians, okay? All right. Talk about money, okay? Last year, 2023, we set a record. There were over, there were 28 extreme weather events that cost us $1 billion or more, and some of those were a lot more. Just look at what happened in Houston last week, right? So in 2023, we set a record, 28 incidents that were $1 billion or more, some of them many, much more than $1 billion, okay? So that's the effects of climate change, okay? The cause, as we know, is too much greenhouse gas, okay? We all need to do our part to address climate change. For some of us, that may be taking the bus to work, or driving an electric car, or putting solar panels in our house, or, you know, having a meatless Mondays, or something like that, okay, to cut our carbon emissions. But you, as the Board of Supervisors, have greater opportunity and responsibility to have an impact on climate change. You can do that by denying Dominion's Energy's application for this Chesterfield gas plant. So with the Board of Supervisors looking at the largest source of air pollution and climate pollution in the county, why won't you hold a hearing? I'm not asking you because it's, I know you can't discuss it, but I'm asking you rhetorically. I'm not asking you, because I know you can't discuss it, but I'm asking you rhetorically. Why won't you hold a hearing? The board is not done with this gas plant, regardless of what you may have been told by county administration officials. Go back and look at the April 5th letter that they keep writing about, the written determination with regard to zoning, and you'll find that that letter and nowhere mentions the Chesterfield Energy Reliability Center. It's not mentioned anywhere in there at all.
Mr. Bessa.
Yes.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay. I'll just simply conclude by saying, today, we filed a letter with the planning board asking for a written determination with regard to zoning, because we disagree with the, we don't think the April 5th letter says what you think it is. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Melissa Thomas.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Thomas. I am the Senior Organizer with Mothers Out Front in Central Virginia. As concerned environmental and public health advocates in Chesterfield County, we urgently seek a meeting with you to discuss Dominion Energy's proposed gas burning plant. This facility has sparked significant public concern due to its potential to emit 1,100 tons of toxic air pollutants annually, including sulfur dioxide, nitrogen dioxide, and carbon monoxide, linked to increased health risks and premature mortality. This would exacerbate ongoing and historical environmental injustices impacting this area, particularly lower-income and black and brown communities. Additionally, Dominion Energy estimates that the plant would emit 4.5 billion pounds of carbon dioxide annually, equivalent to the emissions of half a million cars per year, deepening our climate crisis and threatening regional sustainability. As the governing body of Chesterfield County, we urge the Board of Supervisors to thoroughly evaluate the facility's impact. Recent input from the Chesterfield branch of the NAACP and Friends of Chesterfield highlights community demands for transparency and accountability. Therefore, we strongly support a formal hearing and an official board vote on the project site suitability. I'd like to take a moment to read the names of the individuals and organizations who have signed on to the letter, which I can give to you when I'm done speaking. For myself, with Mothers Out Front, Jason Woodby, board member, Friends of Chesterfield, Victoria Higgins, Virginia Director, Chesapeake Climate Action Network, Jessica Sims, Virginia Field Coordinator, Appalachian Voices, Susan, Dr. Susan Miller, Fellow, American Academy of Family Medicine, and Virginia Clinicians for Climate Action, Thomas E. Beach, Richmond Coordinator, Encore, Third Act, Richmond, Lee Williams, Advocacy Chair, Sierra Club, Fall of the James Group, Kendall Koberwig, Advocacy and Communications Director, Clean Virginia, Leir St. Medr Olson, Director of Advocacy and Campaigns, Virginia League of Conservation Voters, Elizabeth Chavez, Climate Equity Policy Fellow for Virginia Organizing, Ashish Kapoor, Senior Energy and Climate Advisor, Piedmont Environmental Counsel, Walton C. Shepherd, Virginia Director, National Resources, Defense Counsel, David B. Washington, Virginia State Manager, Mothers Out Front, Laura Landis, Coalition Manager, Climate Equity Working Group, Faith Harris, Executive Director of the Virginia Interfaith Power and Light, Connor Kish, Director of Sierra Club, Virginia Chapter, Susan Cruz, Executive Director of Community Climate Collaborative, Amy Bergner, Leadership Team, Climate and Clean Energy Working Group of Virginia Grassroots Coalition, Tanisha Griffin, Environmental Policy Analyst, New Virginia Majority, Chris Miller, President Piedmont Environmental Counsel, Stuart Schwartz, Executive Director, Coalition for Smarter Growth, and Lillian Anderson, Clean Energy and Climate Justice Policy and Campaigns Manager, Virginia Conservation Network, and a number of organizations behind the scenes working on this that didn't sign on to this letter. So, Chesterfield County residents impacted by decades of fossil fuel pollution urge you, their elected representatives, to grant their request for a public hearing on decisions affecting their health, prosperity, and future amid industrial growth. We appreciate your attention and request a meeting to discuss these critical issues and explore solutions to safeguard our community and the environment. Please use the provided documents to contact me and schedule a committee meeting time, and I have a copy of the letter that we emailed to you earlier today that I'll pass out to you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Good evening, ma'am. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Holland, and fellow members of the Chesterfield Board of Supervisors. My name is Rachel James, and I'm an attorney with the Southern Environmental Law Center. I'm here to speak with you on behalf of the Chesterfield branch of the NAACP. Thank you for this opportunity to provide comments. I'd like to briefly identify key concerns that we believe merit a public hearing to determine whether Dominion's gas plant is suitable for the location suggested in Chesterfield County. We believe neither the Battery Brook Parkway location nor the Coxendale Road location are suitable for a polluting gas plant. Nearly a year ago, in August 2023, the Chesterfield branch of the NAACP sent the board a letter communicating that based on worsening climate change and the disproportionate harmful impacts of fossil fuel projects on people of color, the branch opposes Dominion's gas plant proposal and seeks alternative clean energy solutions to meet future electricity needs. We see this position as well-aligned with Chesterfield's comprehensive plan, the purpose of which is to ensure Chesterfield County continues to be a healthy, thriving community of places, providing residents with a high quality of life. We believe a healthy, thriving community of places includes places like the Three Mile surrounding Dominion's proposed gas plant sites, areas where, according to the EPA, 44% of the population are people of color. Additionally, as compared to the rest of the state, EPA data identifies that people within this area are disproportionately overburdened with respect to harmful pollutants like PM 2.5, exposure to which can lead to heart attacks, asthma attacks, bronchitis, and even premature death. Dominion's air permit application indicates that the gas plant is projected to increase emissions of PM 2.5 beyond what the coal plant was emitting prior to its decommissioning in 2023. To say this is a life and death situation is no exaggeration. To date, Dominion has not shared any specific analysis on whether clean energy alternatives could meet the need the gas plant is proposed to meet. On this point, a recently released Applied Economics Clinic report found that a mix of solar, wind, and storage can meet the same needs Dominion says the plant is proposed to meet and can do so more cheaply. In County Administrator Casey's July 3rd letter to DEQ, he indicates the county respects DEQ's authority in making the suitability determination related to Dominion's gas plant proposal. I'd offer that there's not been a question of whether the board making a determination on site suitability respects DEQ's authority. The General Assembly recognizes the critical role a local governing body, like you all, can play in informing DEQ's review of the air permit application, and through an amendment to Virginia law specifically invited the board to provide input into the review process. Please accept the invitation. Please value respecting the constituents each of you have been elected to represent and hold a public hearing to determine the appropriate selection on the site suitability Dominion submitted to the county in May. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Next speaker. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. I wanna offer a little different point of view tonight. I wanna, I wanna talk to you guys about the displaced workers that have gone on with the retirement of these coal-fired plants. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Thanks for allowing me to speak. My name's Kevin Battle. I'm a lifelong resident of Chesterfield County. I'm a graduate of apprentice of the Boilermakers Union Local 45. I currently serve as a boil maker, currently serve the Boilermakers as a business manager and secretary treasurer. The Boilermakers help build, replace, and maintain nuclear coal-fired gas power plants, mostly heavy industrial work. I was able to buy a house, earn great wages and benefits thanks to the Boilermakers Union Apprenticeship Program and the opportunities to work on Dominion power sites. I've watched and helped Chesterfield grow. I'm in favor of the new power plant in Chesterfield for the work opportunities for me and my boilmaker family to help make sure, to help make sure we have a reliable power grid for our community. The Boilermakers Training Center is a path to earn while you learn. It's located in Chesterfield and built around training a qualified workforce to build, maintain sites exactly like the proposed Dominion project. Since 1966, the Boilermakers Local 45 have helped build, maintain several of the Dominion and AEP power plants. Right now, as we speak, Boilermakers are building a brand-new gas-fired unit in Norfolk, Virginia. We're looking forward to help build this project. The two coal-fired units that were retired made over 1,000 megawatts of power. There are already two gas units on this site. We help make these units more efficient. We have installed several emission controls, including baghouses, precipitators, and scrubbers at this plant. Power demand has grown 5% a year. These new gas units would not put out nearly the pollution of the retired coal-fired units. Today, I've brought several of my boilmaker brothers and sisters. Some are just getting started in our registered apprenticeship program. Some are getting ready to graduate, and a couple like me, who have been in for 15, 20 years, and a couple that are close to retirement. This Dominion project would be a great opportunity for our qualified, hard-working boilermakers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Holland, for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, members of the board. I'm Chris Weegard. I'm a resident of Bermuda District. I'll focus on the broader context of the methane plant proposal. First, I'd like to share a few excerpts from a statement on this topic that was made back in March by a few members of the Virginia General Assembly. And I'm just going to do a few excerpts. "After reviewing materials and information provided by Dominion Energy, environmental organizations, and other energy providers, General Assembly members of the central Virginia region express opposition to Dominion Energy's plans to construct a gas-fired power plant in Chesterfield County." They go on to recognize and acknowledge your authority in making the decision, and mention the other governmental entities that would partake of that. But then they say, "Our concerns focus on the impact this proposed plant has on statewide efforts to reduce fossil fuel usage, lower carbon emissions, enforce the Commonwealth's policy on environmental justice, and pursue renewable energy sources and technologies." And the statement is signed by State Senators Hushme, Bagby, Ayer, and delegates McQuinn, Carr, Willett, Cousins, Jones, and Gardner. So, this letter is part of the broader discussion of our path to a sustainable future. Dominion's predictions of nearly doubling fossil fuel use is really unrealistic. It partakes of this fallacy that we call the tragedy of the commons, the idea that a small group of people can profit by abusing a shared resource while the cost of that abuse is shared with a large group of people who do not profit. We must ask ourselves how to meet rising energy needs without falling into climate disaster. The Virginia Offshore Wind Project and expanding solar farms and battery storage will help. There could be a role to play for small modular nuclear plants, but this transition must be broad and it must be fast. We don't have 20 years to take a break, as Dominion is suggesting. I urge all of us to focus on this challenge irrespective of the outcome of the methane plant. This challenge is not going away. It will dominate our lives for 50 years. The outcome will determine the quality of life and, for some, the very survival of many generations to come. To my fellow citizens in the audience, please stay engaged on every level of government, both in trying to stop new fossil fuel projects, but just as importantly, in supporting climate solution efforts. And if you oppose the methane plant, can you please stand up? Thank you. I'll leave a copy, a printed copy of this General Assembly member's statement with you. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks for being here. We appreciate that copy. Thank you all for being here, all the speakers. Ma'am Clerk.
Item 16, deferred items from previous meetings. We have none. Item 17, zoning cases. A, withdrawals. We have one withdrawal. Case 23 SN 0127 in Bermuda Magisterial District. Fast Lane Swim School is a request for conditional use to permit a private swim instruction school incidental to a dwelling in a residential R40 district on 4.86 acres known as 5010 Ashton Creek Road. The applicant has withdrawn this request from the Board of Supervisors' consideration. No further action is necessary.
Thank you very much, ma'am clerk.
Item B, deferrals. We have one deferral. Case 23 SN 0087 in Bermuda Magisterial District. Meteville Road rezoning is a request to rezone from agricultural A, neighborhood business C2, and community business C3 to community business C3 with conditional use planned development to permit exceptions to ordinance requirements on 10 parcels totaling 5.46 acres fronting the north side of East 100 Road. The district supervisor is requesting deferral to the board's September 25th, 2024, public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider the deferral of case 23 SN 0087, Meteville Road rezoning. Is there anyone here would like to speak to this deferral at this point? Anyone would like to speak to this deferral? If so, please come forward, state your name. Seeing no speakers, are there any speakers? Seeing no speakers, this deferral case is now closed. This case is in the Bermuda District. Mr. Engel, if you would make a motion at this point, sir.
Thank you. I know we've deferred this several times. Just so everybody's aware why, we have a property next door that is working a case through that they really need to be worked out together. And for that reason, we believe that the additional case will be able to come through on September 25th's board meeting. So, with that, I make the motion to defer this case, 23 SN 0087, to the September 25th Board of Supervisors' meeting.
Second. It's been moving properly second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it. It's deferred, as suggested. Next item.
C, consent cases for the benefit of the public. Consent cases are those cases where the applicant accepts staff's recommendation, and there is no previous opposition. For each case on the consent agenda, staff has received written confirmation from the applicants that they agree with the conditions being imposed and that all proffers are offered in compliance with state law. The first case is 22 SN 0155 in Dale Magisterial District. Benton Woods is a request to rezone from agricultural A and residential R7 to residential R12 with conditional use planned development to permit exceptions to ordinance requirements on 26.55 acres located along the north side of Chippingham Parkway, adjacent to the Garland Heights subdivision. The applicant proposes an 85-lot, single-family subdivision with varying lot sizes and other amenities to serve the development. Planning, commission, and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 22 SN 0155. Benton Woods, is there anyone who would like to speak to this case? Please come forward and share your name, if you would, please, at this time. In 01, this case is in the Dale District, and I move that we approve case 22.
Mr. Chair, may I confirm the public hearing is closed?
Yes, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now closed. This case is in the Dale District. I move that we approve case with associated conditions, case 22 SN 0155.
Second.
It's been moving properly second. Any additional discussion? There none. All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it. That is approved. Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am clerk. Next item.
Next is case 23 SN 0020 in Bermuda Magisterial District. Chester Fire Station and Fall Line Park rezoning is a request for rezoning from residential R7 and neighborhood business C2 to corporate office O2 district on 9.36 acres known as 4,700 West 100 Road. The proposal will provide for a relocation of the Chester Fire Station Number 1 to this site and a new special-purpose trailhead park to serve as an access point to the future Fall Line Trail. Planning, commission, and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 23 SN 0020, Chester Fire Station and Fall Line Park rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular case? If so, please come forward and state your name.
Hello, my name is Renee Eldred. Glad to see this coming, especially since it's connecting to the Fall Line Trail. The one concern I have is that at the planning commission, there was one gentleman who evidently lived right beside us that had some concerns. And I'd like to know whether or not those concerns have been met before y'all actually vote on this. So, but we're... But we're glad to see it coming, so, thank you.
Mr. Engel, can you speak to that concern requested by Renee?
There's been a request by the planning commission to address that by being able to review the site plan after it submitted. The planning commission itself, not just the planning department, to ensure that we take care of that. And we're also going to work with him to see if he may want to relocate.
Thank you. Any other speakers? This public hearing is now closed. This is in the Bermuda District. Mr. Engel.
Make the motion to approve case 23 SN 0020, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second. It's been moving properly. Second, any additional discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it. Opposed, likewise? Disapprove unanimously. Thank you. Next item.
Next is 24 SN 1007 in the Metoica Magisterial District. Kid North Spring Run Road rezoning is a request to rezone from neighborhood office O-1 district to residential R-12 district on 1.38 acres known as 7301 North Spring Run Road. The applicant is proposing to construct one single-family dwelling on site. Planning, commission, and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 24 SN 1007, Kid North Spring Run rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular case at this time? Please come forward, if you would, and kindly state your name. Seeing no one, come forward. This public hearing is now closed. This case is in the Metoica District. Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff.
Okay.
Transportation.
Mr. Chair, first, I want to start out by saying that this case, this particular parcel, has a history of being zoned in different ways. And this use actually reduces this to probably the least amount of use on this property in many, many years. It was, it was actually one time zoned for nine houses and then a commercial piece. But I have received a concern from neighbors in the area and specifically across the street in Norwood Pond. You know, that is a private road subdivision. And when VDOT, when the Honda dealership was put in at Spring Run on 360, you used to be able to make a left-hand turn. When you turned onto Spring Run from 360, you can make a left-hand turn into the Food Lion Shopping Center. You can't do that because once they put the second entrance into the Honda dealership, VDOT made it a no-left turn and put a barrier in. So what essentially happens is people go down the road and they can't make a U-turn at the end of the barrier, so they turn into Norwood Pond, they make their U-turn, and then come back out. And the concern that the neighbors have in there is that during the construction phase of, which is, again, going to be one house, you know, that some of the construction trucks or contractors may, for some reason, miss their turn to turn in and then turn into Norwood Pond. I don't know, and I've talked with staff, I don't really know of any solution, but I'm wondering if transportation may have some advice as to what even the neighborhood could do to, you know, perhaps discourage people from coming in there and doing U-turns.
Well, there is, Mr. Carroll, an approved zoning case adjacent to the one, the single-family case that's before you, right next door. And in that 2016 zoning case, they were proffered to provide a connection to the Food Lion through their property. So as you come south on Spring Run, you could make a left into this access road and then connect into Food Lion. So that would deter folks or they'd have another way in. So that's a future improvement with the development.
And that case is pending right now?
Yes. I believe there was, it's in for an amendment, but I don't think it's anything that would impact the connection that's proffered.
Yeah, and I'm familiar with the case. Essentially, what she said, if you didn't hear, is that if that case gets approved, it will provide a left-hand turn prior to getting to this case or to Norwood Pond where you could turn left into that development and then turn immediately left into the Food Lion Shopping Center, which would remove the problem that we have right now of people making U-turns or going into Norwood Pond.
Correct.
I can't help if people still get lost, but hopefully that won't happen. But, and there's nothing really, because it's a private road essentially, that we could post there, or even VDOT could post there because it's a private road. Am I right?
Correct. And we know folks, we've heard from folks who then go down and, you know, make their way over to the roundabout on Winter Park and say, "It's a long way around," but they also do that as a way to get back to Food Lion.
I'm wondering if, when a building permit is issued for this, that perhaps we could have something, a notification to whoever's building the house to encourage the people to not be turning into Norwood Pond. I know it's nothing that's enforceable.
Yeah.
But perhaps when we go through the building permit process, staff could let whoever's been contracted to build the house say, "Hey, look, you know, this is a private road over here, and hopefully your people will be able to make the right, the right proper turn here." And certainly enforce any of the other provisions that we have, such as making sure that debris from the worksite doesn't get pulled out in the road, that kind of stuff. I know that's outside of your area, but perhaps we can make sure, we talk with the other staff and make them aware of that as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions, concerns? I think it's been moving properly. Second, already, any additional discussion?
Actually, I didn't make a motion yet.
You didn't?
But I'm getting ready.
Excuse me. All right.
I like what you're doing here.
If you would, make a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve case number 24 SN 1007, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second.
It's been moving properly. Second, all those in favor, let it be known by, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it. The case is approved. All right, thank you. Next case.
Next is case 24 SN 1053 in Midlothian Magisterial District. Agno's Fence and Setback Exceptions is a request for conditional use plan development to permit exceptions to ordinance requirements in a residential R-15 district on .73 acre known as 14541 Alden Gate Road. The applicant is seeking exception to the maximum fence height in a required front yard and conditional use plan development for exceptions for front and interior side yard requirements for existing accessory structures. Planning, commission, and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 24 SN 1053, Agno's Fence and Setback Exceptions. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular case at this time? If so, please come forward, give us your name. Seeing no one, this public hearing is now closed. This case is in the Midlothian District. Dr. Mello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's going on here is that we have a property that, where the owners actually put in a seven-foot fence along one side of their property. I mean, you'll notice, if you can see it up there, that what's happening is that they're actually kind of like a peninsula. When you look at, they're three, they're surrounded by three roads on each side. And I understand why they put it in. And at the same time, I'm a little hesitant around the fact that, you know, whoever installed it needs to be aware of what is and what is not allowed as far as the height of the fence. So I always tend to be a little bit hesitant when, you know, someone builds something and then they plead ignorance and then they turn around and say that, "Well, can we do it?" That being said, the way this came to our attention was that someone noticed it and said, "Hey, whoa, whoa, that fence isn't supposed to be that high." However, whoever that person is, we've had community meetings and we haven't heard anything, so we really don't have anywhere to go as far as that's concerned. But I can say this, and that is that we're about to hear, right next door, another case that is just, what happened was the fence, they created an agreement with their next-door neighbor, and their next-door neighbor, actually, some of that fence goes on their property. So what I have here is two neighbors that agree, and they feel comfortable with it. So I don't see anything, as long as it's not getting in the way of the right-of-way and you can't see, you know, getting around the corner, it's not creating any kind of a safety issue. And I know that the planning district, the planning department, and my planning commissioner is good with it. So with that in mind, I'm fine to go ahead and move approval of case number 24 SN 1053, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Have a second. Second. It's been moving properly. Second, any additional comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it. The case is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next item.
Next is case 24 SN 1095 in Midlothian Magisterial District. Astrop Fence Exception is a request for conditional use plan development for an exception to the maximum height for a fence located in the front yard in residential R-15 district on .77 acre known as 410 Charlemagne Road. Planning, commission, and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 24 SN 1095. As noted, Agno's Fence and Setback, we just did that one, didn't we? Okay, I thought we did. Oh, this is 1095 as well, Astrop Fence Exceptions. All right, I see a double here. So, next case is 1095. We just did that.
We did the other fence case.
10.
There's two fences in a row.
Okay, two fences, okay. Thank you. Okay, all right. This is case 24 SN 1095. Again, public hearing on this particular case. Is anyone who would like to speak to this particular case? Please come forward, if you would. Seeing no one, this case is located in the Midlothian District. Dr. Mello, thank you, Dr. Mello. Okay.
I knew it would be confusing because both, we were talking essentially the same case twice.
Mr. Chair.
I totally understand.
I'll just really confuse you. Second.
Mr. Chair.
I will go ahead and move.
Mr. Chair. Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so sorry. Mr. Chair, may I confirm that the public hearing is closed?
The public hearing is now closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and move approval of case number 24 SN 1095, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second. It's been moving properly. Second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it. That case is approved unanimously. Thank you. All right, next case.
Next is case 24 SN 1071 in Metoica Magisterial District. Second Branch Amendment is a request to amend zoning approval, case 88 SN 0234, to permit the use of private wells in a residential R-25 district fronting approximately 60 feet on 31.7 acres, I'm sorry, 31.76 acres fronting the northwest side of Second Branch Road. Condition two of case 88 SN 0234 stated that the subdivision must be developed using the public water system but permitted private sewer septic systems. This is the last acreage for Second Branch subdivision still undeveloped. The applicant seeks the amendment to use private wells because the public water is 750 feet from the property. Planning, commission, and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 24 SN 1071, Second Branch Amendment. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular case? Seeing no one, come forward. This public hearing is now closed. This case is located in the Metoica District. Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make the motion to approve case number 24 SN 1071, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moving properly. Second, any additional discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it. The case is approved unanimously.
Just one comment to the, I mean, this, at one point, this property was zoned for much greater density. You're literally going to break this into three lots. This is, quite frankly, an example of why, you know, when we're looking through ZOMOD to look at an agricultural zoning case where you could have a piece of land like this, and instead of trying to put two houses per acre, you could actually have, in this case, three lots. My comment on that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, next case.
Last on your consent agenda is case 24 SN 1092 in Midlothian Magisterial District. Alversa Drive zoning amendment is a request to amend zoning approval, case 22 SN 0009, in a community business C-3 district on 13.51 acres generally located at the northeast quadrant of Midlothian Turnpike and Alversa Drive. Zoning case 22 SN 0009 was approved as a mixed-use development permitting 350 multifamily units, apartments, and approximately 75,000 square feet of commercial and retail space. The current request includes reducing proposed residential density to 60 residential condominiums constructed in the townhome style, as well as increasing proposed commercial and retail space to 90,000 square feet. Planning, commission, and staff recommend approval subject to the conditions in your staff report.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 24 SN 1092, Alversa Drive zoning amendment. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular case at this time? Seeing no one, this public hearing is now closed, and this is located in the Midlothian District. Dr. Mello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a very interesting case, as far as it is on Alversa, it's on old Buckingham. And as Madam Clerk just initially read, the idea was to put 350 multifamily apartments. I became concerned, my planning commissioner became concerned with regard to the, that many apartments there. So I am really grateful that the developer worked really hard to kind of pull this together and to, instead, turn this into 60 townhomes condominiums. So I'm just so grateful to work with that. A couple other points I want to make is that this is a very exciting project, although I don't think I'm allowed to say, I am allowed to say that whatever grocer were to be going in there at this time, that it'll be the first one in Chesterfield County. I don't know, I guess I could say that. But I can also say that it comes with a price from, on one level. If you're going to notice on that, on the screen, you can see that the brown building that's there toward the bottom left, what is there right now is a wonderful tenant, a gentleman by the name of Randy Miller. You know, one of the things I love about our jobs is that we get to know our neighbors. And Randy has been there for 33 years. And he's been there, and he details cars, there's a U-Haul there. And we spent some time talking about a reality that ultimately, he's going to need to move his business, again, after being there for 33 years. And Randy's a very affable kind of guy. He's a former Super Bowl champion with the Pittsburgh Steelers, and just someone I call a friend. So I reached out to the developers and asked them, would it be possible to give him some time to at least have a head start on moving the business? Again, developers were terrific in saying that they wouldn't break ground before January 1st of '25. They agreed to that proffer, and so I'm very excited about this project, and I'm looking forward to going in. And I suspect that the good folks of Midlothian are very excited about it also. So with that in mind, I am really excited to move on approval of case 24 SN 1092, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Are you imposing a condition as well?
That's my question.
You gotta add that to your motion.
You added that.
Yeah, let me go ahead and add that to the motion.
Thank you.
Which is to say that we'll prove it, subject to the staff report, and with that, that there would not be any kind of, no land disturbance prior to January 1st, 2025.
This is imposed condition. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, under your rules, actually, under Rule 12(c), since that condition is made after it was published, in the, this case was published in the newspaper, then you need a unanimous approval from the board to be able to then vote on it tonight? Otherwise, it would have to be deferred to the next meeting.
I don't see a problem. We actually don't have to do that because this is an imposition. They didn't change their proffers. He imposed the condition and they've-
Oh, okay, I'm-
So we do not have to, we do not have to do that?
This is an additional, so we don't.
Gotcha.
And it's going to be unanimous anyway. It is anyway. Nevertheless.
But just so you know, we don't have to enact that.
Okay, well, it was, yeah, it was announced as a proffer, now it's imposed.
I think it's been proved.
Someone might vote, no, no, just the one.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moving properly. Second, as noted, any additional comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
As have it. That's unanimously approved. Thank you. Okay. All right, next item, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, that concludes your consent cases for this evening. Mr. Chair, that concludes your consent cases for this evening. You have no discussion cases on your agenda this evening. Eighteen, public hearings. A, to consider proposed amendments to the FY 2025 budget and appropriations resolution due to the adoption of the state budget. Mr. Harris.
Okay, Mr. Harris.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is a public hearing culmination of many, many months of planning. The primary purpose here is to appropriate the additional state revenue that came through ultimately for the school division. As you know, they were delayed in their process. And then we were deliberate, once the news got here, the school board took this up last month. We discussed it last month in consent highlights. This has been through committees and so forth and so on. So, a lot of work to get here tonight. It's just, again, the culmination of that. I'm going to touch on just a few of the highlights on the school package. If you were to think back to Superintendent's proposed budget, he had a unfunded list of items that he would like to have seen put in the budget. It was in the neighborhood of $22, $23 million. This is a $30 million additional appropriation in state money. There's no local match to any of these dollars. So, the superintendent's list is fully exhausted. The delta between the 30 and the 22, 23 really is state mandates that they put in, but largely funded, you know, with dollars that show up here. A couple of things that I'll just point out, sort of things that have been interest to this board, you see a $2.5 million recurring increase in major maintenance funding. So, we've done a lot of that through year end and sort of one-off opportunities, but this is a recurring piece. They got more work to do and you'll hear about that as we go through the '26 budget process this fall, but this is certainly a step in the right direction to have some recurrent funding. Same thing on, on school buses, we've made inroads there and that program's certainly in a much better pace. You heard this afternoon by the school security officers and success recruiting those and getting those onto all campuses across the county at $4.2 million. The rest of these, you know, we have generally covered, but I'm happy to take any questions on the, the school pieces. I have a one short companion slide on a few cleanup items on the county side, but before I flip slides, any questions on the school?
Let's have questions, yeah. Thank you, let's have questions on the school piece first. Any comments or questions, board members?
I just have one, does that put schools at a billion, 30 million?
Yes, sir, they would. They would crest the billion dollar mark. That's all...
That's approximately correct though, right? A billion, 30 million with this amendment?
Yes, sir.
Yes, any other comments or questions? Next item, Mr. Harris.
On the county side, again, a much shorter list, you know, we did not have a whole lot of things bounce around the General Assembly from a financial or budget perspective. And then we get just a couple of just sort of normal cleanup items that we included in this public hearing since we'd advertised. I will walk through all of these. The replacement of truck 203 was in an accident, so we have some insurance money essentially and then we have a reserve to fill in the delta on that. So, this is putting all that back together and re-appropriating it for the fire part budget. They need to get this in their budget for '25 just to get on the list to sort of get that truck where the delivery on those is, takes quite some time. So, that, that's why this shows up here as opposed to cleaning it up at some other point during the year. That was important. You heard Dr. Casey talk about his comments, we had a bond sale last week, so we did anticipate some of the premium. This is just the delta on the premium that we did receive, so this goes into a capital program, $900,000. You see on the Commonwealth Attorney piece, this has been a topic that you all and boards before you have been advocating for, for quite some time. The state, like they do on schools, certainly acknowledged the staffing gaps in a number of places, but certainly in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. So, that did come through, we've been at the top of that list, money finally showed up in the final state budget, so this would appropriate $480,000 in the creation, which we're asking you to do, of four local positions funded with these state dollars to get the Commonwealth Attorney closer to, to the staffing targets that they had oh for. But again, that's five to seven years of advocacy and working with the cop board and our General Assembly partners to get to this point. The last item you see here on the top, some PEG funding, this is a dedicated source that funds, you know, all the AV in this room and any place that where we can broadcast and get information out to the public, it's a dedicated legally restricted source. And this would go to take care of some of those needs at the new school headquarters at Spring Line that you all have had a chance to, to take a look at. One item that's not listed on the county side, it's a, it's a little bit of a, of a nuance, but they did, $50,000 was awarded to the Health Department for the continuation of some community health workers. Those are state positions, we are just in a, a matching situation. When the state puts additional monies in the Health Department, we match it with local dollars. So, that's, it's not listed because we're not asking you to create those positions, but it is detailed in the item itself. They will be state positions housed within the Health Department. We're able to continue that important work in some of those underserved communities. In the purple at the bottom of the slide is the appropriation of some ARPA interest. As you know, we're trying to get that program all dialed in and sort of wrapped up by the end of this calendar year. So, this will make sure that the budgets are all squared away for 630, appropriating some interest in these two fire programs that you all have, you know, through the approval of your '25 budget, approved the continuation of, but this is really just sort of squaring it up for 630, interest earned within those segmented ARPA funds to just sort of an accounting piece, but it is important to make sure that that is cleaned up for 630 as it's something that is audited very closely. So, with that, I'm happy to, to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Harris, ma'am?
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Yes.
At the top, you have 39.6 million, but the greenish color is 3.46 million and the ARPA is 1.2 million.
The 39 is, is the overall ask, county and schools.
County and schools combined?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that makes more sense. I was just trying to figure out where the rest of that was coming from, so thank you very much.
One public hearing, one ask, one response, yes, sir.
Yeah, this is, this is second phase, Mr. Engle, of this portion here. Yeah, yeah, just before we do the public hearing, one question on the latter truck. So, you've mentioned that this is a portion of that. Do you know what the total cost of that potentially is?
I believe that the 1.65 will cover the entirety, but the, the insurance recovery on the truck was insufficient, but we budget a flat amount in fire operas every year and they don't tend to use it all. And so, we, like you do in, in other areas, we automatically reserve that delta and so we're pulling some out of that savings account to make sure that they have enough to, to buy the truck.
To buy the truck.
Yes, sir.
Very good, all right, very good. Any questions, yes?
Ma'am, I think it's important just for the public that may be watching, this was a fire truck that was hit in an accident, correct?
Yes, sir. I believe it was on the side of 95.
Side of 95. And so, you know, this is the reason why we have to do this, because that truck was essentially totaled and, and insurance company, insurances provided some funds and we need to match the rest and replace the vehicle.
Yes, sir, that's, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that as well, Ray. All right, any other questions? Yes, one more question.
Just to pick up on that, because it was one of the questions that came up for me and I don't know if the community's going to answer the same question. I think I remember it was like $700,000 that was covered by insurance. So, a little less than half of what it was, but yet it was, they were hit by some. And I'm curious to know, how does that work as far as, I mean, obviously, do we go after the individual who hit the truck? Like, how does that work?
Probably the insurance, I would guess.
The insurance does, yes.
Insurance company, Mr. Mink.
There's, there's subrogation for the insurance, that the insurance company goes through a subrogation provision themselves, so that's, that's something that they do.
He probably only had a $1 million or maybe $2 million coverage, which is still not quite enough.
And I, yeah, I believe the risk management then, then pursues the remainder as well. But I don't know on this particular case where that, where that is.
So, there's a possibility that...
Yeah.
We may be able to recover this money along the way once that plays out, right? Well, we can't wait for that, but I mean...
Well, that's, that's important. Mr. Mink's is right in his description of that, but the, to get on the list for the vendor here was, is really the goal we're trying to meet and we'll work through those pieces. If money comes in, it can be re-appropriated, put back into the reserve at a later time.
In addition, we have a reserve account that covers that as well.
Yes, sir.
I think that's important.
That's correct.
We set up many years ago.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Yes, another question?
Do we know how old the vehicle or the truck was?
It, it was, it was, I don't know the exact age, but it was not particularly old, no.
Okay. Okay, I'm just asking because again, I would assume they'd probably assess it at its...
Yeah, to be clear, the proceeds we got back, similar to your own car, is really what the value of that car is at the time. Our, our insurance wasn't the replacement value, it was the fair market value.
That's right. Thank you. Assuming no other questions. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2025 budget and appropriations resolution due to adoption of the state budget for schools primarily. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular issue? If so, please come forward and give us your name. Seeing no one, this public hearing is now closed and it's back before the board for a motion and approval. It's been moved?
Second.
Properly seconded, thank you. Any additional comments? All those in favor, sign of eye.
Aye.
As have it, that's approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Next item, Madam Clerk.
B, to adopt an ordinance to vacate a portion of Deer Leaf Court within Clover Hill Industrial Park Phase 1. Mr. Sasek.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Casey, this is a public hearing to consider the vacation of Pine, of Deer, excuse me, of Deer Leaf Court within Clover Hill Industrial Park Phase 1. This portion of right-of-way is no longer needed and if approved, we will retain some necessary sewer and water easements within that right-of-way.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Sasek? Hearing none. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to adopt an ordinance to vacate a portion of Deerfield Court within Clover Hill Industrial Park Phase 1. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular case? Seeing no one, this case is, public hearing is now closed and it's back before the board for discussion and vote.
So moved.
Been moved?
Second.
And properly seconded. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, sign of eye.
Aye.
As have it, that's approved. Thank you, Mr. Sasek. Done. Next item.
C, to adopt an ordinance to vacate a portion of Pine Needle Lane, also known as Stewart Avenue, and street widening easements in Stewart subdivision. Mr. Sasek.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Casey, this is a public hearing to consider the vacation of Pine Needle Lane, also known as Stewart Avenue, and street widening easements in Stewart subdivision. Mr. and Mrs. Smith own lots in this area, they also reside in the subdivision. They intend to resubdivide the property to create a, a building site for their grandson is the reason for this vacation. The utilities master plan does call for a future water and sewer line in this area and we will retain that easement in the vacated right-of-way if approved.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Sasek? Hearing none. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance to vacate a portion of Pine Needle Lane, also known as Stewart Avenue, and street widening easement in Stewart subdivision. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular case? Seeing no one, this public hearing is now closed, it's now back before the board for discussion and vote.
Most are approved.
It's been approved?
I'll second.
And properly seconded. Any additional comments? All those in favor, sign of eye.
Aye.
As have it, that's approved. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
D, to consider a request to quitclaim a portion of Baldur's Parkway. Mr. Sasek.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Casey, this is a public hearing to consider a request to quitclaim a portion of Baldur's Parkway. This portion of right-of-way was dedicated in 1975, but when Baldur's Parkway was constructed, it was not constructed over this sliver. The development of caliber collision on adjacent property requests this quitclaim and it has been reviewed and approved by VDOT and staff.
Thank you. Any questions? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider a request to quitclaim a portion of Baldur's Parkway. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular item? I see someone coming, please come forward and speak. So, your name and your comments, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Lindsay Rotin and I'm here on behalf of the landowner if you guys have any questions.
Any questions of you? Thank you for being here. Thank you, okay? Thank you very much. Any other speakers? This public hearing is now closed and it's back before the board for vote and discussion. Any additional?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
And properly seconded. All those in favor, sign of eye.
Aye.
As have it, thank you. We're finally there, almost. Thank you, good job. Next item.
E, to consider conveyance of an underground easement to Virginia Electric and Power Company across OB Gates Elementary School. Mr. Sasek.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Casey, this is a public hearing to consider the conveyance of an underground easement to Virginia Electric and Power Company across OB Gates Elementary School. This easement is needed to serve Courthouse Landing, the adjoining development. Dominion has worked with county staff and school staff to ensure that there will be no disturbance to the school and no removal of trees is planned.
Great, no removal of trees, I hear you.
Yes, sir.
Now, any questions? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider conveyance of an underground easement to Virginia Electric and Power Company across OB Gates Elementary School. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular case? Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed and it's back before the board. I move that we approve this case. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any additional comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, sign of eye.
Aye.
As have it, that's so approved. Thank you. Next item.
F, to consider the authorization of eminent domain of blighted vacant properties located at 4731 Black Oak Road and 8801 Rams Circle. Mr. Minks.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a public hearing on, to authorize eminent domain on these two properties. These are blighted properties, both are vacant. There have, there have been attempts to reach out to the owners. Actually, we made contact with the Rams Circle owner and thought we had, had actually reached an agreement, but when we sent the agreement to them to sign, it never came back and all contact has basically been cut off for about four months. So, we're going to continue to reach out and, and see if we can resolve that one. On the, on the Black Oak property, there, we've just never gotten any response back from any correspondents. So, we've gone through the entire blighting process, which the board's been involved in, and now we're at acquisition, we just can't acquire it any other way than this.
Okay, thank you. Is Mr. Coin here? No, I'm seeing, no, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider the authorization... Okay, we have a speaker? Okay, please come forward.
Nick.
Okay, thank you, I didn't realize Mr. Coin was here, but thank you for being here.
I look like him sometimes, but...
Give us your name, I'm sorry.
My name is Nick Fight and I work at Community Enhancement and I'm handling the blight program now.
Okay.
And I can answer any questions you have about these houses.
Great, Nick. Any questions of Nick regarding these properties?
These are the two we talked about last month, right?
Yes.
Yes, there's a lot of steps in the process to do this, this work.
Yeah, this is about longstanding process, as you recall, as the attorney has stated, so excellent. All right, well, thank you, Nick, for being, any questions, I'm sorry. All right, well, thank you, Nick, for being, any question, I'm sorry?
Could you just clarify, because I know that's what Jerry's coming to ask, because I told him that, so, when these are, do, do the families get any, or if they're, or they get the money?
Oh, yes.
Of the, the assessed value of the house, correct?
Correct. What, yeah, whatever, whatever the award is in the condemnation they get.
Yeah.
And then usually there's a process, it can be complicated, on figuring out who gets what percentage, and who all the claimants are.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. You, thanks, Nick, that's all. Mr. Turner.
Jerry Turner, you answered part of what I was going to ask. When they sell these houses, you're talking about a percentage. My problem is, what percentage? Because they come in and say, well, we sold it for $200,000, but the county's got $150,000 in expenses, so you only go get $50,000 of it, because we got all these expenses that we have gone through, so that the people that really need the money, they don't get anything. The county gets it. And I have a real problem with, with the county using the eminent domain. I did look at one of these houses. It is in bad shape. It's going to take a lot to get it fixed up so anybody could even live in it. However, if there's any money involved, the biggest majority of it, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say at least three-fourths of it, needs to go to the people that need it. These, this family that lived in this house, they really need the money to continue existing in a decent environment. Just have a problem when you start, you're talking about eminent domain and taking things from people.
Yes, sir. I appreciate, Mr. Turner, that's something we consider as well, sir, equally. Renee, please come on and speak, and then I'm gonna open the public hearing at this point, after you speak, for any other speakers.
We're in the public.
Yeah, you are in the public, but I haven't opened a public hearing yet. We're just, we're speaking, okay?
I actually went back and looked at the board meeting from last month where they did the report on the blight, and I kind of have a problem with, I don't really care about using eminent domain. Nobody needs to have this stuff taken. But, the county assesses the prop, the county assesses your property, and then the next year, it goes into the matrix, and you get another assessment, and so forth, and so forth, and it usually increases. Well, these properties, they've been years, sometimes decades, that they have not been kept, and they're not really worth what the county is offering. And to boot, when you give it to the nonprofit, who is going to, in turn, fix it and sell it at an affordable rate, most likely, there's still a lot of money involved in getting the house, refurbishing it, getting it to somebody who needs it, which I'm all in favor of getting rid of the blight. But, I did notice one comment in the, in the report was that we have monies, so it's not affecting the taxpayer, but the monies that they're talking about is taxpayer money. So, all this money that we're sinking into one house can, can get rather pricey, and all the tax, it's all going to be taxpayer money. Going into the, into one house is not the best use of the monies for one home. And I would, like I said, the, the program needs to be, because lord knows, we got some houses around here that, that, that need to be either demolished or refurbished. But, I think you need to really put a good eye on the program to say, how much is it actually going to cost the taxpayers, either in county money or federal money? To redo this house and get it back to where it's livable again, as say opposed to maybe demolishing it. It's just, it's a lot of money being sunk into one house. And, I know when you go, when, I think they said they start at the assessor's amount?
Mm-hmm.
That not, might not necessarily be an accurate value, to me, anyhow.
That's reasonable.
So, I just, I would like the county, and I would also like the county to publicize a little bit better about what they're paying for and how they're doing it.
Okay. I think we've probably done a reasonable, good job. Anyway, let's go ahead and get to the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider authorization of eminent domain of blighted vacant properties located at 4731 Black Oak Road and 8801 Rams Circle. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this particular request? Seeing no one, this public hearing is now closed, and it's back before the board for consideration and a vote.
I have a question.
Yep. Yep, you can certainly question, whom you would like to question?
I think, Mr. Minks.
Mr. Minks, thank you.
Are we able to get an assessment, to actually have the house assessed and use that as the offer, not the, not the assessed value, but an appraised value of today's value?
We did that on both of these properties.
So, it, it's an actual appraisal based on today's condition of the home? Okay.
My understanding is, we have to offer the greater of the assessed value or the appraisal?
So, now I have a statement for Dr. Casey. We need to make sure that we work with the assessor's office so that any home on the blight list is properly assessed with an appraised value, not with a value that may possibly be held over from some number of years where nobody's actually put their eyes on it, and causes us to spend more money. To Mr. Turner's point, they should get the value of the home, the actual value of the home, but they shouldn't get an inflated value because the assessor's office didn't decrease their assessment based on the blight of the home.
I would say the offers in both of these cases were made based on the appraised value.
Okay. So, that's a, thank you for making that clarification, I think.
We do work with the assessor's office.
I'm sorry?
To send them the properties that are blighted, so that they, when they do their annual and semi-annual appraisals, they can go and look at them. You know, you don't get an, an assessment on your home every single year, it's a sample of what is in the county, but we are working with them to not defeat ourselves in doing this.
Thank you, thank you all for that.
Yep.
And again, as you sense, this is very rare. What usually happens is homes start to, you know, degrade, and, and our families can't take them any longer, what they do is what most people do, and they, they sell it, because they, they move, and we're not even involved in the process. So, you're not involved in the hundreds, if not thousands, of transactions over the years that are otherwise occurring. These are the ones for the families who have vacated the properties, who have chosen not to sell it. Now, some of it is because of other heirs and estates and other complications, that we're actually bringing closure to the family on behalf of this process, but your, your point is well taken. If we have the best valuation tools, we will. Having said that, sometimes the assessed values may not always represent the demolition costs or other rehab costs on a piece of property. Assessment metrics sometimes are different than appraisal metrics.
Absolutely. Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Casey. Mr. Engel, is that okay now?
I believe that we're working in the right direction, so I'm good with that, and I'll make the motion to.
Thank, just before, one question.
Sorry.
Nick, how are we publicizing? It was mentioned by Renee that she likes us to better publicize. Can you speak to that at this point, or publicizing these, this long-term blighted property list? Can you speak to that?
Anyone can contact me, and I will tell them, hey, this is what we're working on. And I have several people that call about properties. We don't have a official, you know, extensive blight list. We, we have the properties that the board has blighted, and those are the officially blighted properties. There are other properties that we just have unresponsive owners to years of code enforcement efforts, and now that we've kind of shifted from boarding or demolishing a property that's a problem into trying to acquire it and get it to a different owner, whether it's a nonprofit or a market-based solution, this is the, you know, we've only just started doing this. You will hear more about those, and there will be public hearings like this one to authorize the use of eminent domain, or to authorize the sale of them once we've acquired them, and then are trying to get them to a new owner. This whole process is only because a private party cannot give a title to them. It's a very rare instance where someone is still paying the taxes, but they are not responsive to the county's efforts to, you know, have them correct a code enforcement, you know, structural problem with the home. Most of the time, our, a letter from our code enforcement inspectors is enough of a nudge to get people to either sell or to fix. So, you know, there's 150,000 or plus homes in the county, and we've, you know, we're, we're looking at like 30 are on our radar right now, and I'm sure there's more than that in the county, but they're really, it's, you know, this is very much the exception. So.
Thank you, Nick.
And that's good.
Thank you, Nick. Yep, another comment, yes. Mr. Carroll?
I think that doesn't necessarily answer the actual question. The question that was asked is, how do we publicize it? And so, what I mean by that is, okay, so we had the discussion last month about this in the work session. We put on our agenda for a public hearing this month. We advertised our public hearing out to the community, which is now I'm answering the question for the person who asked it, right? And so, when we advertise it out as part of our agenda, that's when it officially gets actually put out there to the community, that, number one, these two particular addresses are going to be taken through eminent domain, this is the reason why. But, we didn't put in, in the, on the actual board, when you look at the board agenda item, there is nothing that talks to you about the, the value of what the properties were assessed at. And that's something we, as a board, may have to look at in the future to say, as a part of our advertisements, if we do this, we need to incorporate a little more information so that when that agenda item comes up, and someone looks at the agenda, whether they go online, or if they get a printed copy of it, or if they hit the QR code, and they're sitting in this, in the audience, and they bring it up, they can see that information. So, I think that answers.
Yeah, it does, it does. Thank you, Mr. Carroll, I appreciate that, because we may need to review the process in addition to what we do on our agenda. I think that may be something that we can do, going forward.
Absolutely.
Mr. Engel, I'll take that motion now.
Thank you.
Okay? If you can.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I think the point that I'd like to make is that it's not as if we're going to advertise this the same way that we would put it in a newspaper. There's a reality here in that a lot of work, a lot of time, hours have been put into trying to contact these owners, and they do not want to be found. Or, they are found, we have a conversation with them, we send the necessary documentation to them, hey, sign this, and let's move the process forward, and then there's no response. I mean, eminent domain, by definition, is something that I personally, I think we all will enter into very reluctantly, because we're trying to take something that frankly isn't ours, except we're now in the situation where we really have no choice. So, we want to do everything we can to make it as above-board, as transparent, and as appropriately, as far as financially, to really, I mean, what's interesting is that Mr. Turner and Renee spoke to both sides, as well I read it, to the argument. One argument is, you know, this is a lot of money, and so, these folks have walked away from a lot of money. We want to try to get the money to them, if we're able to do that. The other side of it is that it's costing our taxpayers money, because we have to take the time to make phone calls to send, and try to track it down, then we have to invest in the home, then we need to fix the home, then we need to turn around and sell the home. All of that process is where the scale is, and so, that's what we're entering into this. We're trying to be very, very careful on how we go about this, having to do it as transparently as possible, so that it's very above-board.
Thank you for that comment, and as you noted, eminent domain is the last option that this board has always considered, so I think that should be known. And now, I entertain a motion from Mr. Engel, who was about to make one a moment ago.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Miller, for your comments, and I make the motion to move forward.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor sign of eye.
Aye.
As have it, it's unanimously approved. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
F, to approve quitclaim and declare 21502 Pickett Avenue, South Chesterfield, Virginia, 23803 surplus. Mr. Bowles.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Casey, this is a public hearing to approve a quitclaim and declare 21502 Pickett Avenue, South Chesterfield, Virginia, surplus.
Okay.
The county has used this property for fire and emergency medical services since 1951, when it was deeded to the county by the trustees of Metooc United Methodist Church. Since the property was deeded to the county with the condition that the county could use it as long as it desired for a fire station, it's necessary to declare the property surplus as part of transitioning to the new station on Hickory Road, which opened in June. Also, a quitclaim action is necessary because the deed allowed the county to not return the property to the trustees for up to five years after vacating the building, and since a new station is already in place, this condition is unnecessary, and removing it allows the trustees to move forward with their full use of the property. General Services and Fire and EMS are in the final stages of completing a list of tasks to exit the station, and we anticipate returning the building back fully to the trustees within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Bowles? Hearing none. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to approve quitclaim and declare 21502 Pickett Avenue, South Chesterfield, Virginia, 23803 surplus. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this particular issue? Please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one, this public hearing is now closed, and it's back before the board. Before I ask for a motion, I, I think it would be helpful in the future if we have a list of surplus properties. I think, Dr. Casey, that would be something that I think we would like to make sure is shared with the community as well as this board, so moving forward. Now, given that, I would like to entertain a motion to approve this item.
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion to approve the quitclaim.
It's been moved, then?
Second.
Properly second. Additional comments? Hearing none. All those in favor sign of eye.
Aye.
As have it, this is, item is approved. Next item, Madam Clerk.
19, 15-minute citizen comment period on unscheduled matters. This time is designated for citizens to talk to the board supervisors. It is not a time for dialogue with the board members, and it is not a question-answer period. Those conversations can easily occur with individual board members outside of the board meeting. As a reminder, the board's procedures state, no citizens shall speak on any matter of business that is a subject on the board's agenda for that day, and each speaker shall have three minutes to address the board. We have five speakers. I'll call them all up, and if they'll speak in this order, Rochelle Barone, Nathaniel Baumann, Roxana Potaretu, Jerry Turner, and Georgie Anne Stennett.
Please come forward. Thank you, and good evening. Ms. Barone, good evening.
Good evening, Board of Supervisor members. My name is Rochelle Barone. I am a resident and registered voter in Chesterfield County. I am a licensed massage therapist and a retired registered nurse. I have asked to speak to the board again, to ask for assist, their assistance in amending Chapter 15, Article 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the County of Chesterfield regarding administration of massage for consideration, specifically Section 15-101, which requires licensed massage therapists to obtain a permit from the Chesterfield County Police Department. When my colleagues and I have appeared before you at previous meetings, we provided information about what is required to become a licensed massage therapist. We receive our license from the Virginia Department of Health Professions. We respect that license, as it indicates that we are health care providers. We feel the ordinance as written stigmatizes our profession. Listing our profession with other regulated professions demeans our chosen profession and assumes us guilty by association. On September 27, 2023, county attorney and then the chief of police asked the existing code to be amended to address the, quote, "national nationwide explosion of illicit massage shops engaged in illegal activities of prostitution and human trafficking," end quote. They added that unsuspecting residents had been assaulted by unlicensed, I repeat, unlicensed therapist. We have shared with you how the requirements stipulated in the ordinance were communicated to the massage therapy, massage therapy community. Five months after its passage, massage businesses started to be informed. I have had a valid massage license in Virginia since 2012, yet I have still not received notification. It is said that ignorance is no excuse, of the law is no excuse, but if this ordinance was intended to deal with the problem of illicit massage shops, the execution of its rollout says otherwise. The ordinance that was amended in September of 2023 was enacted in 2018, and Section 15-95, it says, licenses of all licensed massage therapists practicing in a massage establishment must be posted. Section 15-100 states, quote, "This article shall be enforced by the police department and the health department. These departments may inspect for the purpose of determining compliance." So, why a new ordinance that adds permitting not only to massage businesses, but to legally licensed massage therapists?
Ms. Barone, your three minutes are up.
Will you finish your comments, ma'am?
Yes, human trafficking is a reality, but there are more effective ways to deal with the illicit businesses that are act, in actuality brothels. Deborah Kimmitt is the executive director of the LMT Body Politic, a nationally-based massage therapy advocacy group that specializes in developing approaches to, quote, "combat brothels described disguised as massage businesses." She sent a very informative email to Chairman Holland.
Thank you.
I do hope she, he shared that with the other board members. In addition to listing ways ordinance such as the, this one I am discussing are harmful to law-abiding massage therapists, she provided solutions. As she says, these solutions are low-cost, don't burden law-abiding massage therapists, and are effective. The network team is a Northern Virginian nonprofit anti-trafficking agency that helps governmental agencies. Their website is extremely informative. I encourage you to look at their resources. It is these illicit massage businesses that are involved in sex trafficking, and accordingly, there needs to be a comprehensive case against these criminal groups to be effective in closing these businesses. Again, to quote Ms. Kimmitt, "Massage therapists want to do their part, but not in a way that burdens them." She asks, as I have asked, we don't treat all doctors like drug dealers when some misbehave. Licensed massage therapists are health care deliverers. Listing our profession as regulated profession because some criminal element uses the word "massage" to sell sex is offensive. Requiring massage therapists to obtain a permit from the police department is not going to be inconvenience a transnational criminal enterprise.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Next speaker.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Um, thank you for letting me, I apologize. I'm the tail end of the Friends of Chesterfield County. I was coming to offer some additional information. They kind of got it all. But I think the focus of why I was coming was more to suggest, um, a different approach to not adding additional power. I understand there's an enormous amount of people who are currently moving to Virginia. I understand that there's new data plants, plenty factory Legos going in, so the requirements for energy are already massive and will continue to grow. I also understand that the requirements to maintain a habitable environment are, um, complex and becoming more complex every day, as, um, of a previous speaker stated. So, um, the impetus for me coming, and I'm not a, I'm not a resident of Chesterfield, I'm, I live currently in Richmond, is to ask, um, you to look at alternatives to, um, the Peker plant and fossil fuel. Currently, there are multitude of companies and, um, government agencies that are trying to develop microgrids using batteries, solar, and wind that can be deployed, building in sustainability and redundancies into our grid as we are dealing more and more with storms like what Houston just went with, I've had to deal with recently. Also, I know it's not the seventies anymore, but it's still somewhat of a touchy issue, nuclear. Small modular reactors are becoming more and more of, uh, technology that is available. I know it probably would be difficult to build one, but Terra Power out in Wyoming is currently being constructed and I believe should be commissioned this year within the next two. I believe that then the coming decades will be difficult, but, um, making educated and capable investments in infrastructure is the best way we can go, um, while also trying to meet the needs of the local populations and businesses. And I think technology is, is our best bet. So.
Thank you.
I cede the floor and thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Next speaker.
Good evening, Honorable Members of Chesterfield County Board of Supervisor, Mr. Chair, Mr. Casey, Mr. Minks. My name is Roxana Potoretu and I am a licensed massage therapist. I came tonight to speak about the massage ordinance approved in September twenty twenty-three. Those that know me better can attest that I would rather be in the garden pulling weeds and taking care of my forty kinds of hot peppers right now. Instead, for the past six months, I've been immersed in the situation of the Chesterfield massage community. But you see, I believe that what the county has chosen to put in place is the wrong option. It is not my opinion, rather the fact. Nearly a year later, many of the establishments suspected of being criminal are still open. Many of the individuals that believe to be part of the criminal network participating in prostitution and human trafficking are still free. This has been presented as the only way to address this issue. Throughout all this, not one single argument has been able to show why individual licensed massage therapists needed to be included in this ordinance rather than just addressing establishment permitting. There are many resources the county can draw inspiration from that contain provisions that have been effective in other jurisdictions, including addressing money laundering, racketeering, empowering local authorities to close establishments proven to be criminal, involving landlords, and addressing, ending the leases of establishments that have been involved in criminal activity. At the moment, the application of this particular ordinance is ineffective. Many of the sources can be used, that can be used as inspiration, are included in the communication that massage advocate Deborah Kimmett has emailed you. We again respectfully request the board to readdress this ordinance. In accordance to Code of Virginia, the board has the authority to amend or repeal it at any time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure I, attorney, I appreciate your recommendations. Thank you. Mr. Turner.
I'm Jerry Turner.
Yes.
I debated on where to cut up, say anything tonight, and after listening to all the accolades that the county got, it's getting, I'm even more turned on where I should say anything or not. So I'm going to kind of run around in circles here. Last week, I was at the budget, at the planning meeting and I asked a question, who, who decommissions these solar farms twenty-five, thirty years from now? And I, I got, kind of got a runaround as to how much money was going to be involved. And after the meeting, I was introduced to one of the, the installers, and he went through this complicated scenario of what, what they would put into it to come up with a bond. And I talked to Mr. Ramsey a couple of days later, and I can say that planning, they don't always answer the phones, but they will call you back. Not saying that a lot of the other sections of the county's phone system, they don't, they're, they're not as responsive. But planning is, so I, I really can't complain about them. If they don't call you back that day, within two or three days, they're calling you back. Because they've probably got six, seven hundred cases on their, their desk any time, any one time, so I don't complain about them. What, what brought this up was I went to the new and improved website that the county has out. It's very nice. I'm still trying to learn on my way around it. But when I put a code in, in that search menu, and it tells me there's one file found, I click on that file and nothing comes up. I'm sitting there waiting for it to tell me something. Now, I probably could have gone to the IT folks, and I did talk to the IT folks. The county does not have, at least I couldn't find it, a help desk that I could go to. The one that, the guy that I did talk to, he was very nice. He tried to help me as much as he could because I'm not a county employee. He was really, couldn't help me a whole lot. Because I kept saying, I want to talk to somebody that a private citizen can go to about this webpage. I never did get there. Bottom line is, the, the county gave the IT bunch twenty-four million dollars last year. At least gives, gives some kind of help desk for people that, that called in. For what Dr. Casey said, it was three hundred and eighty thousand people in, in Chesterfield County. It's got to be more than one person trying to get some help on the, on the webpage because I'm not the only one. And that's not the first time I've run into issues with, with the webpage.
Mr. Turner.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. I always appreciate your recommendations, Mr. Turner.
Do something with your help desk.
Help desk, thank you for that comment. I'm sure we're noting it. Thank you. Uh, next speaker. I think we have one more.
Georgie Anne Stinnett.
Okay. Georgie Anne. Georgie Anne here. Maybe not. Okay. Uh, I don't see. Anyway, next item, madam.
Item twenty, adjournment. Mr. Chair, we need a motion to adjourn to the VACO Region Three meeting on July twenty-fifth at two PM, to then adjourn to Congressman Whitman's visit to the Chesterfield County Jail on August sixth at two PM, to then adjourn to the VACO County Official Summit on August fifteenth at nine AM, to then adjourn to the regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four at two PM. So moved.
It's been moved then.
Second.
Properly second. All those in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
As have it, we are adjourned to those associated meetings. Thank you for listening tomorrow, madam. And don't forget, the county fair, August twenty-third. Have a good evening.